1110 Houston Street, Laredo, Texas, August 18, 2025, 5:30 PM. All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic of this country, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you, may be seated. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Honorable Mayor Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 1 Gilbert Gonzalez. Honorable Councilmember District 2 Ricardo Rangel Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 3 Melissa Cigarroa.
Here.
Honorable Councilmember District 4 Ricardo Rick Garza.
Okay.
Honorable Councilmember District 5 Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 6 Dr. Tyler King.
Here.
Honorable Mayor Portem and Councilmember District 7 Vanessa Perez.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember District 8 Alisa Cigarroa.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mayor elect a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 4, 2025.
Second.
Motion second, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, motion open up recognitions.
Motion second, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, will proceed with recognitions. City of Laredo recognizes, along with Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino proudly recognizes Zoe Castañeda, Luis Ivan Zapata Espinoza, students of Harmony School of Innovation Laredo, who were selected to participate in the National Youth Leadership Forum, NYLF, Pathways to STEM, hosted at Rice University in Houston. This prestigious summer program organized by Envision, by World Strides, provides them with hands-on academic career-focused experiences in science, technology, engineering, and math. Way to represent Laredo. It's always a great thing to have youth in our community achieving great things. I congratulate you for this great achievement. Now tell us a little bit about your experience.
In Rice University, I learned a lot of things about STEM and science. I also learned about the different parts of the heart.
Very good. Very good.
I have a little speech.
Mayor, is this where we quiz him on the heart?
Miho, go ahead with your speech, Miho.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luis Ivan Zapata Espinoza, and I feel very honored by this great recognition that the city and the mayor of Laredo, Texas, Dr. Victor Trevino have given me. Since my childhood, my dream has always been to become a great scientist, and I have been working hard to achieve it. That's why this recognition tells me that I'm on the right path. I want to thank all of the teachers of Harmony School of Innovation I've had in my school life, because with their teaching and support, they have helped me get to where I am now. And especially to Ms. Salia Salinas, who trusted me to successfully attend the program of NYLF Pathways to STEM at Rice University. También gracias a mis padres que me han apoyado en todo para realizar mis metas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone, for this opportunity and this time. Our leaders are showing a great enthusiasm. And at an early age, we are promoting our students, you know, at Harmony School of Innovation of Laredo, to think not only here locally, but outside. These two students had an experience, a whole week in a college dorm with other peers their own age, learning about science, STEM. It's also a great way of showing them that there's possibilities endless at our campus, and anywhere they go, they're representing us, the city of Laredo, and for them to be great leaders everywhere they go. So thank you very much, Dr. Trevino, for this opportunity, and everybody else. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may? Just to Zoe and Luis, congratulations, guys. It really means the world that you're out there representing Laredo. To your teachers, thank you so very, very much. Your counselors, everybody out there at Harmony School, it's a wonderful school. To the parents, thank you all so much, because without you behind your children, they wouldn't be able to achieve what they're doing now. Miho, you did a wonderful job reading Luis. I think you're doing wonderful, you're doing great. And Zoe, keep on representing Laredo, both of you. You all are doing a great job representing us all here, and we're very, very proud of you. Continue to do so. We appreciate it, guys, a lot. Thank you. If the family members of Zoe and Luis would like to get up here as well to take a picture with the mayor and your councilor. You ready? One, two, three. One more. Ready, one, two, three.
One more here. One, two, and three.
Two more, sorry, girl. I'll do this quick as I can.
Three, two. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
All right, next recognition. City of Laredo Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino recognizes Manuel Cristian Cardenas, a Laredo native for his outstanding achievement as a U.S. Patent Holder. His innovation and dedication inspire all our community and are a testament to the talent that thrives in Laredo. And as mayor, it's always important to highlight the talent that comes from Laredo for our youth, giving them examples of success stories. And Mr. Cardenas, can you tell us more about this point?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, friends, fellow citizens of Laredo. Good evening. I want to begin with a story, because that's where it all really started. One night, after hearing me talk about this idea for what had to be the 300th time, my wife looked at me and said, "Shut up already and do something about it." So here we are tonight. I guess this is what happens when you actually listen to your wife. I was born and raised in Laredo. This community is not just from where I'm from, it's who I am. From early year at the Gau School to graduating from San Agustín High School, continuing to Gibbs College and to Northeastern University, everything I've accomplished traces back to the roots I planted here. Earlier this year, I was awarded a U.S. Patent, something I worked hard for, but something I know I couldn't achieve without the foundation Laredo gave me. This is more than a patent. It is a symbol that ideas born here, dreams started here, can reach anywhere. Growing up, there was a slogan I remember for the '90s, "Laredo Proud." I've carried that my entire life with me. In boardrooms, in studios, in every business venture, late-night brainstorm, I carry Laredo with me. The pride, the resilience, the grit. It's built into who I am. And I wouldn't be here without the people who push me forward to make sure that I kept going. To my teachers at San Agustín High School, Ms. Resendes, Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Mora, Sister Alma Rose, and so many others, thank you. You never stop teaching, guiding, and believing in your students. Each of you, in your own way, helped carry me to this moment. To Mayor Trevino, Mr. Victor Trevino, and everyone who made this recognition possible, thank you for believing in the progress and innovation can come from within our community. Success stories don't have to leave Laredo behind to make a difference. And to the next generation, growing up in the city, if you're dreaming big, keep going. Your ideas, your efforts, your stories, it matters. If someone like me can do it, so can you. Never stop being Laredo Proud. Thank you again for this incredible honor. I will carry it with me always with pride and gratitude, and the promise to pay it forward. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll take your tea. Come on, you should. Ready, one, two, three. One more, ready, one, two, three. Are you sure you don't want to?
No, I really don't want to do the picture.
Come on down, wifey, come on down.
Tell them again.
Tell them again. For the second one. One, two, three. Thank you.
One more, one more, one.
One, two, and three.
One more picture. Two. Great job. Great job, thank you.
All right. City of Laredo Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino recognizes Mary REC 20 Help of Christian Schools 5th Grade Boys Soccer Team for the exceptional achievement in securing the 2024-2025 City Championship Title. Their unwavering dedication, perseverance, and teamwork led to an all-well-deserved victory. Congratulations to the players and coaches. And I do want to thank the parents for all your dedication and efforts in bringing your kids to practice and the games. Do any of the coaches have anything to say? Yes, they do.
All right, well, hello, everybody. I was super prepared for this, and I will, first of all, we'd like to thank everybody. I would like to thank the team, the school, and the parents for trusting myself and Carlos, who was unable to join us today. It was a great opportunity to help the students and the team understand that everybody is valuable in each of their goals and be able to work together into their second championship for the team in a row. So congratulations, team, and keep on going at it. Proud of you.
Do you want me to take? I'll take it first, and then we'll allow you all to take it, okay?
Thank you, yeah, thank you. No, you're fine. I think you're safe. I'm like, oh, gosh, dude, I can give it to you. Right, right. Yeah, talk about something different, absolutely. Coach, you want to say anything? Okay, guys, don't go over here. No, no, don't cover your face, just like that. Ready, one, two, three. Ready. One, two, three.
One more, one more. One. One, two, and...
One more? You got one more? Did you take one out?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Hit one. Right over there. One, two, three. Great.
All right. City of Laredo Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino recognizes Castellano Inc. Carpenter Dental Associates for the years of service and contribution to our community. Now, reason I wanted to recognize these individuals in our community, because besides of their great work as they do in husband-and-wife dental practice that had been serving Laredo community for over 30 years, with Dr. Vanessa Carpenter as a general dentist with an emphasis on cosmetic dentistry, and Dr. Castellano, who is also former president of the American Academy of Pediatric Dental Services, I would like to present them with this. Congratulations, this recognition. We have known that they served the public with a lot of endeavors, a lot of public support, a lot of public announcements, so we congratulate them for that. Thank you. And would like to have a few words, of course.
I guess I'm the nominated speaker. Mayor and councilmen and women, thank you so much for this honor. It means a lot to us. We've been blessed to be able to serve this community for 34 years. And when we started, we made an agreement that said that, you know, when we can, and over the years, we want to give back to the community. So what we give back to the community is just a result of the blessings that we received. We're happy to do it, and that's what makes our city great, is just citizens that want to give back and just keep helping those that need it in our city. So thank you so much. We're honored, and we appreciate the recognition.
We'll go back there for a quick.
Mayor, if I may, say a few words. Dr. Castellano, Dr. Carpenter, just want to tell you all, thank you all for serving our community for over 30 years, doing a wonderful job. You've cleaned my teeth hundreds of times, my families as well. They do a wonderful job taking care of us, and I hope you can do another 34 with us.
I'm more excited about Florida than my life.
Can you scoot over, Dr.? Right there. Ready, one, two, three.
One, two, and...
Congratulations. Mayor, before you come up, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up number 35 with recognition as well.
Second. Aye.
Item 35, recognition of the Laredo 7 U All-Stars for winning the 2025 Pony South Zone Pinto 7 World Series Champions. You know, I want to acknowledge and congratulate all these group of young players, I'm sure, for putting Laredo on the map. I'm sure they've been keeping up with what Team Mexico has been doing this past week. Hopefully, they stay focused so they can put Laredo on the map at Wimberley in the near future. Thank you, guys, congratulations.
Head Coach Alejandro? I'd like to say a few words about the journey and the accomplishment, brother.
Yeah, just to talk about the experience that we had here at the Pony World Series. I mean, it was something wonderful to get this group of young boys come together, practicing, showing their heart. They all came together, trusted each other. More than anything, they were committed, committed, and they came through over there in Portland. I mean, it was an outstanding tournament. We allowed a total of six runs, a total of five games. The first three games, we shut out. Championship game, we only allowed one run. So they were ready to go since they won. Since they won a practice, they showed a lot of heart. So congratulations, boys, and we're not done. We're not done.
Yeah, we can say a little bit better. Right there.
Smile, smile.
Put your certificate. Make sure they're facing the right way, boys. Diego, where's your certificate? Let's go, Diego. Here. Gilbert. Gilbert, sit. Oh, they're covering the sign up, that's why. They're covering the banner. They're covering the banner. Get amongst the side. Uh, Bayo, you all scoot over this way, okay? There you go. Okay, they're coming here. Ready, guys?
My voice.
Right here, ready, one, two, three. Yeah, give me one minute. We'll get an opportunity. Good, continue.
Ready, one, two, and...
You want to go ahead? Yes. Look, boys. Thank you, go ahead. Go ahead, man. Sure. Yeah. Here you go. Quick, man. Thank you. Mayor elect a motion to open up citizen comments.
Motion second, citizen comments, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, will proceed with citizen comments. Dr. Angel and Kristi Bryant.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, city council members, respected community members over here, thank you for having us here. My name is Dr. Angela Piakrell, and I'm a project manager for BORO 2025 Project Bilateral Community Air Monitoring Project in Los Dos Laredos. I work with Rio Grande International Story Center, and with me I have my colleague.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kristi Donahue Bryant, and I'm from RISC. I am the Community Engagement Partnership Officer. So as a part of the project, we have installed hyper-local community air monitoring sensors across Laredo and Novo Laredo, and we already started collecting data, PM 2.5, that's what we're collecting, and we are saving our data through Data Dashboard. It's a public-facing data dashboard. You can go to the RISC website and find it there. So our goal here is to provide the community with the public-facing nearly real data that is easy to access. So other part of this project is we have already established a Bilateral Air Council, who everybody can be a member of it. It's a network of stakeholders who are interested to learn more about the air quality and how to improve our air quality, especially focusing on seniors and our future generations. So in over the past few months, we have already conducted an in-person workshop, and in June, in July, we hosted an information session on the basic of federal clean air acts and laws. And to continue this momentum, we are excited to launch a webinar series. This is to aware the community, everyone here, students, everyone who is present. This is to inform the community, aware the community, and educate the community about our air quality. So for this session, for this webinar, it will be on 27th of August last Wednesday, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM over the Zoom. Our guest speaker is Dr. Kimberly Terrance. She is a visiting scientist at Environmental Integrity Project, and she has an experience of 20 years in environmental here, air quality monitoring, focusing on health impact of pollution. So her presentation is entitled as "Clear the Air: Press Course on PM 2.5." I believe this will be a great opportunity for community members, staff, leaders, everyone to learn, ask, question, and engage about our issues that impact our daily life. It's open to everyone and completely free. We hope you all will join, spread the words, and be a part of this conversation. We all believe that together we can build a healthier, more informed and engaged community. So thank you for this opportunity to invite you all, and like, we hope to see you all on August 27 over the Zoom then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll proceed with communications, and after that, I want to bring up my items. Mayor, excuse me, I believe we have six or seven more comments. They're on an item. I don't know if you want to give them the opportunity to speak now or wait till item thirty-six comes up, because I know we have several on item thirty-six. We're going to bring up item thirty-six, and then we'll bring up their comments. It'll be communications followed by item thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six. We'll bring it up as soon as possible. That's your motion, Mayor? As well as my second. I'll second that. Okay, second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passed.
Sorry, Mayor. I'm here. I'm so sorry. I'm into request, mine, because there's a director involved. Item thirty-eight moved up with yours.
All right.
I'll make a motion to move that, yeah.
I'll second that motion. Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Both? Motion passed.
Sorry, guys.
All right, proceed with communications. Number one, report by the Laredo Fire Department and its conclusion of its deployment in support of Texas Emergency Medical Task Force for the Curville Flooding Recovery Operations. The mission ran from July twenty, twenty twenty-five to August thirteen, twenty-five. I do want to thank our emergency services from the fire department that come up and be recognized. Thank you. And as community, we also sometimes don't know the amount of work and importance that goes into emergency preparedness. But it is when we have an emergency that we know how to be prepared, and we really are. I remember when we had the flood in twenty-ten, and believe it or not, in nineteen fifty-four. In this situation, so it was something good that we're able to help out another Texas community that was devastated by natural disaster. So Fire Department, if you can, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Management, Filipez Rodriguez Jr., Assistant Fire Chief for the record. Behind me, I have Deputy Chief Gonzalez, Texas Emergency Medical Task Force District Chief Nathan Rubio, and of course, our members of the department that were involved in the ambulance strike team. I'll read you a quick report. So our incident name was the 2025 Severe Weather Flooding Activation. It was a twenty-four-day operation from July twentieth to August thirteenth, and we had two different crew members. We had Juan Ricardo Hurd and Victor Robledo, who were deployed to Curville. They were staged in Curville and rehabbed at the Shriner University. They were assigned to an ambulance strike team where they would transport between Pearson Regional and Area Facilities. They continued with inter-facility transfers as well. The assisted volunteer fire department with peer support, EMS duties, and the volunteers, other volunteers and first responders. They were staged at Guadalupe River to assist the task force team during the recovery operations. They stayed at Camp Mystic to assist the dive teams there with their recovery operations as well. Second crew swapped on August second, twenty-five. That was composed of with Mr. Miguel Deluna and Mr. Jesse Leando. They also were staged at Curville. They were assigned as well to an ambulance strike team, and there they staged to assist Task Force Two, Texas Task Force Two, during their search and recovery operations. They stood by at the Emergency Operations Center, excuse me, and they also assisted with geographical forest protections for those areas. They assisted the DPA dive operations teams as well. While they're doing their operations, they would stand by in case somebody would get hurt. So they were eventually de-bomalized on eight thirteen twenty-five, and so they did a great job out there. I have Nathan Rubio from the task force. If you have any other questions? Nathan is a Laredo Fire Department product, a product. He moved on to bigger, better things, and now is helping us out at EMTS Task Force. If you have any other questions, or you have any other questions for us?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to express our deep appreciation for the officers who went out there and participated in that. I know those early days, there was an effort to find survivors, and the devastation, as we saw it, was unimaginable. And to think that you are looking for people seeing all that devastation, it takes a very special kind of person and a very special kind of courage to do that, and you represent the city when you do that. So we are so proud and grateful to you and your work. Thank you.
All right. And on our behalf, the Mayor and City Council hereby recognizes you in recognition for the dedication and unwavering support in assisting victims during the floods in Curville, Texas, and will provide you with a recognition to stand by.
Could we possibly hear from you guys on kind of your experience up there? If you don't mind, maybe?
Yes, go ahead, say it for me, boys.
Okay.
Thank you. Jesse Leando, firefighter with the Laredo Fire Department. We're the recent crew, me and Miguel Deluna. Like you said, we could see that through pictures and videos and the news, and does not compare to what it looks like in person. It's very sad, and I'm proud and proud to have this opportunity to go out and be of some use to that. What I did see is the city of Curville and the surrounding cities, they've come together. They've come together. It's very inspiring to see, and they're supporting one another. There's a lot of support around there. They were bringing us meals to our ambulances and bringing us drinks and trying to support any way they could. So it was a deep honor to be able to do that, and it reminds us what to prioritize in our lives. So I invite anybody who hears these words to look at what is important to you and hold it very closely.
Yes. Go ahead, don't be shy.
It's more or less just to reiterate what he said about not being able to understand the devastation that was involved in this. You know, hearing it on the news, you don't realize how quickly that water can damage. But it was great to see the, I guess, that Texas bond that they have, or that we have, come together. Everybody that we spoke to there either had a story about Laredo whenever they asked where we were from. Either it was they had a relative here, they had, you know, have come to a ranch to come hunting. So it was good to see that type of camaraderie, and it was, like he said, an honor to be able to represent the city and the department in that fashion.
Thank you. Next.
You're forced. Wasn't expecting to speak. No, just what we saw out there, it was very shocking. We all seen, we all saw the news out there, how quick the storms came, the families that were impacted. When we arrived, there was still three bodies yet to be recovered within a few days. They had found one of the bodies, pending two. Seeing the resiliency and all the volunteers helping out, helping the community, it was something, a sight to see. I don't wish on that level of destruction for anybody to experience. It was truly heartbreaking to see the destruction, the houses, the people that were impacted, the patients that we encountered, the stories that they told us. They all knew a victim that were impacted by this flooding. And it was just, and it was an honor to help them because they really needed the help, and for us to help out, it was, I'm glad that we were able to experience and help them out because, I don't know how to say it, it was something, it was something else.
Thanks, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Miguel Deluna with the Laredo Fire Department. Basically, exactly what they all just said, it was an honor to be out there and do our part and help out as much as we could, as well as, you know, how Jesse had said, that seeing the people of Curville and all the surrounding areas, and basically, everybody from Texas was there, you know, helping out from different areas. That was good to see. It was great to be a part of that, everybody just working together, and even the people of Curville that experienced the devastation, they were all still held their heads up high and helping out, doing their part, you know, everybody's, everyone's neighbors, helping with cleanup, and like Jesse had mentioned, they were all willing to provide refreshments and food, and some even provided their homes as accommodations for restrooms and whatnot. So that was good to see from them. Yeah, basically, it was just an honor.
You're next. That's it? All right. Well, we appreciate everything you did for us, and to portray what Laredo's all about, that's the type of people we are here in Laredo, and this shows that by you going over there and helping people out in a time of need, hopefully, we won't have a situation like that, but we wish people like that from other places would come here and help also. But thank you very much for your service. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Ready? One, two, and three.
That's the line over here? One, three, two. I got it. All right. Communications, number two. Presentation by Mayor providing general comments on city manners, upcoming initiatives, and other relevant updates for the council and the public. Some of the announcements, we're getting ready for Laredo Marathon that will be held on November sixteen, twenty twenty-five. After several discussions with the help of TechDOT, we're going to be permitted to have our city race this year without changing the route. I want to thank the running community for their input and help with this. With that being said, as a city with Boston certified marathon, we have become a part of a family of cities throughout the world. One of those cities is Sydney, Australia, which brings us up to the next communication. Anybody want to present on this? All right. We'll proceed to number three. Letter from the office of Mayor Dr. Victor Trevino to Lord Mayor Clover Moore of Sydney, Australia, congratulating him on recently accepted World Marathon Major's race and our participation and friendship. And Sydney, Australia, has been recently approved to become one of the seven World Majors to join the ranks of London, Chicago, New York, Germany, Tokyo, and Boston. And we have one Laredo competing in this race this year. As a gesture of goodwill and sportsmanship between our cities, we will be sending the Lord Mayor Moore a framed jersey from our marathon. We also have some words for our local runners to say a couple of words.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Management, Victor Trevino for the record. I'm here with Director J.J. Gomez and Jen Sanchez from Parks and Recs. As you can see, this is our 2023 Laredo Marathon jersey. This was the first year we initiated. It's a Boston qualifier. We've actually been published as on a list of World Marathons, so we're known worldwide because of our certification. As you know, Mayor, you just stated that Sydney, Australia became the seventh global major, and so it's an honor to go race there at the end of this month, and we're going to be presenting a similarly framed jersey to the mayor there of Sydney in hopes that next year they send somebody over here. So this is the spirit of goodwill and friendship and sportsmanship. It's similar to our sister cities, but more so for athletics, and I think this year we have a great announcement because, as you mentioned, TechDOT is going to allow us to do the Laredo Marathon course one more year before the construction on Loop Twenty and before we have to change it. But in addition to that, another announcement will be that we will be adding an adaptive athlete category for athletes with disabilities. Ms. Jen Sanchez is going to talk a little bit about it, but in the interim, if I could maybe have you guys sign this jersey before we frame it, and this is going to go all the way to Sydney, Australia. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jenny Sanchez. I'm your Special Needs Manager for Parks and Rec, and we're very excited that we have many things happening this year. We've done a lot already, but what we've committed to is every five K, ten K half marathon, marathon that we, you know, host in the city of Laredo with Parks and Rec, we're going to make sure we have an athletes with disabilities division. And what that means is that it includes a mobility impaired division, which includes persons with cognitive disabilities. We also will have our visually impaired division, and all of these include a guide. We can either, they can provide their own, or we'll provide one for them. And we also have our wheelers, which are multiple wheelchair divisions, including with the Laredo Marathon, we are going to include the recumbent bike division, which should be a Boston qualifier as well. So we're excited that we are not just including persons with disabilities in our marathon, they're competitive athletes in this marathon. So we're excited to keep on moving our division forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I was going to introduce Jenny, but that's...
I should do myself.
Yeah. That's the, I want to give, when I do my presentation later this evening, you're going to see the new program that we added to our department. It's really, I'm, I'm, sorry, it's really proud of our department, our staff, because when I took the CPM class three years ago, I realized my practicum was how behind we are in special needs and adaptive. And one of the things that I said with the help of management and you all, that we were going to open up a division of special needs and adaptive, and also for all needs. And we could have hired the right person because she hit the ground running. She come with a lot of experience, with experience from the school districts as well, worked with those, with special needs kids. So you're going to see later on this evening of all the program that we have added in the last five, six months, but she's a firecracker. She gets, from the time she gets here in the morning to the time she leaves, she gets out and always wants to grow, grow the program. So I'm really proud and honored to have her, and I'm going to take the opportunity to take everyone from our park staff that, because it has been a challenge, but it's very well rewarding when you go to the rec centers and see these people having fun. So you'll see later on this evening when I show the little video. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll proceed with number four. All right. Mayor, City Council, as your city manager, I am pleased to formally introduce our new city engineer, Mr. Eliud de Los Santos. Mr. De Los Santos brings a wealth of experience from both the public and private sectors with a strong background in infrastructure planning, project execution and inter-agency coordination. He began his professional career with the city of Laredo in the utilities department as a construction inspector, where he gained valuable field experience. He later served as project engineer one with civil engineering consultants, working on roadway drainage and utility designs, and then joined the Texas Department of Transportation as a transportation engineer, managing plans, specifications and estimates for major infrastructure projects across our district. Mr. De Los Santos returned to the city of Laredo as a civil engineer two, where he managed public works projects that included street improvements, trails, drainage systems and public facilities. Most recently, he served as interim utilities director, where he guided the department's operations and strategic initiatives. He is a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, Kingsville, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering and is a licensed professional engineer. We are excited to have him in this key leadership role as city engineer. Mr. De Los Santos will lead efforts to enhance and expand our infrastructure, working closely with departments and stakeholders to ensure sustainable and resilient growth for our community.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Go, maybe go quick. I just want to say that I'm honored for this opportunity given to by management and this council to serve us as your city engineer for the city of Laredo. I look forward to keep on moving on the accomplishments that we've had with the leadership under Mr. Chavez, our previous city engineer. And my goal is to keep on moving on with the infrastructure projects, keep them moving that align with the community's needs and the goals of this council. And if you ever need anything, I'm a phone call away, I'm on the second floor. You're free to walk into my office anytime. Thank you.
Alright. Okay, we're going to start with thirty-six first. Motion to break up number thirty-six, Mayor, you ask? Thirty-six. Thirty-six. All in favor? Second, all in favor? Aye. Those, motion pass. Number thirty-six, discussion with possible action to direct the city of Laredo Utility Department to investigate the addition of fluoride into the city's public drinking water in order to provide a low cost treatment that is scientifically proven to improve dental hygiene in children and adults and any other matters incident thereto. I did receive several calls regarding this item about adding fluoride to our public water. And understandably, this topic is naturally going to get public interest, public interested and concerned. As a medical doctor, for me, the question is not really benefit to fluoride. We have discussed and reviewed adding, and reviewed adding fluoride to the water since I was a medical doctor at the health department over 30 years ago, when I was at the health department then, Health Authority. We never recommended this course back then because the question wasn't whether fluoride was beneficial, but whether it was necessary since we get fluoride from other sources and we are blessed to already have it natural in our water from the river. And we don't have an issue with rampant tooth decay in our community. But what I do know is that when, I would caution the council is that if we add too much fluoride in our water, this can lead to the staining of teeth and could also impact the development of enamel in small children due to what's called dental fluoresces. But that would depend on what fluoride levels the water is currently showing. So with that being said, we would like to hear from utilities and the health director about their findings and recommendations. Go ahead.
Mayor, may I just ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Would we want to have the citizen comments to come up first? And that way, maybe we can tailor some of the information provided to those questions.
Okay. Is that a motion? Motion, second all in favor? Alright. We have several citizens comments on the, on the item. Kobe Bryant.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the council, today I rise to address
Can we have your name for the
Oh, Kobe Bryant for the record.
Yes.
To address a matter of great importance to our community. The proposal to increase fluoride levels in our drinking water has sparked much debate. And after careful consideration, I have come to the conclusion that I would, that it would be unwise for this government to pursue such a motion. First and foremost, we must acknowledge that there is simply not enough data to justify this decision. Unless we have strong recommendation from the, our health and water department, I see no compelling reason to expose the public to a potential risk. Our community deserves certainty and safety when it comes to the quality of our drinking water. Having absorbed how this council has previously invested our tax money in water plant, it is only natural for our, for the public to be curious. We cannot afford to repeat past mistakes. The trust of our citizens is paramount and any action that raises concerns could jeopardize that trust. Moreover, I believe it is essential for individuals to have the autonomy to choose how much fluoride they consume. People should have the right to make informed decisions about their health rather than have that choice dictated by government policy. Instead of focusing on fluoride increase, I urge the council to redirect its attention to the pressing needs for repairs to our water infrastructure. Our water system has proven to be in need of maintenance and investing in that will yield greater benefits for our community. In conclusion, if this government wishes to proceed with the idea of increasing fluoride levels, I caution against experimenting with our only source of drinking water. Let us prioritize safety, transparency and public trust above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. Edith Espinosa.
Hi, Edith Espinosa for the record. So basically fluoride was added first to public drinking water in 1945 in Grand Rapids, Michigan with the goal of reducing tooth decay. However, in the mid 1950s, Crest launched its toothpaste with fluoride. This toothpaste was developed by Joseph and William, which was the first recognized by the American Dental Association as an effective decay preventing agent, receiving the ADA CEO of acceptance in 1916. Therefore, since Laredo already has point five to point six parts per million in naturally occurring fluoride minerals, according to the Environmental Working Group tab water database, and the optimal levels of fluoride are set at a maximum of point seven points per million per the CDC. We already have enough fluoride in our water and to add more would be counterproductive and an infringement on Laredo individual rights. The FDA currently classifies fluoride as a drug. Therefore, adding fluoride to public water supplies forces medication on everyone without individual medical consent, which is the standard practice for medication. And I am against mass medication. Trump opposes fluoride, Robert Kennedy opposes fluoride, Europe opposes fluoride, the state of Utah opposes fluoride, the state of Florida currently opposes fluoride. I oppose massively medicating the public with an antiquated system that is on the verge of getting eradicated by the American government. Implementing a fluoration system in Laredo, Texas will further burden the taxpayers with an unnecessary expense. I personally, I personally recommend using a toothbrush and toothpaste to prevent tooth decay in Laredo, Texas. It costs around $3 to purchase and it is accessible to everybody. This would bring back personal power and responsibility on the citizens of Laredo, Texas. If Ms. Melissa Segarra wants to establish fluoride in our water system, she should first hold a public voting elections since it affects 300,000 people. And I don't think that the health of 300,000 Laredo citizens should be decided by only eight people. Laredo has ranked third unhealthiest city in the United States according to Wallet Hub on April 5, 2024. It published that we do have a lot of shortcomings in this city, but dental decay was not one of them. The major concern in this city was mental, the lack of mental health counselors. We have 22 counselors per 100,000 residents. We also rank at number 181 for percentage of adults ages 19 to 64 with health insurance, number 181 for percentage of visiting doctors or dentists, number 180 for general dentist for, per 100,000 residents. So we only have 11 dentists per 100,000 residents. So what I think is that we need more dentists in the area and I guess like more places where people can actually get their, their dental work done instead of adding more fluoride and putting the burden on people. Is my time over?
Yes. Thank you very much. Kelly Barrera.
Thank you for having me, Council. For the record, my name is Kelly Barrera. I would like to start off with a quote from, in a letter from the Belgian government in the year 2000. It goes, "The fundamental position of the drinking water sector is that it is not its task to deliver medicinal treatment to people. That is the sole responsibility of health services." I oppose for many reasons, health effects aside, for the fact that it is unethical to deliver medicine through the city water supply because it removes the individual's right to inform consent to medicinal treatment. This is the reason why most of Europe does not fluoridate its water because it is a ethical violation. And your studies show that European tooth decay rates are unaffected despite lack of fluoridated water. As mentioned, the FDA classifies fluoride as a drug, not a nutrient. This is a medication and as such, you are proposing to medicate the city water supply. And if my dentist, my child's dentist allows me to opt out of fluoride treatments and respects it, I believe that this motion should be put to a public vote. So I do believe that people are to decide their own medical decisions. Because I may have cavities, which I don't. I don't think that you all should be forced to have more fluoridated water in our system. The effectiveness of fluoride? The evidence is mixed from what I've seen. Yes, it could help with tooth decay, but there is no meaningful decrease in cavities where water is fluoridated. For example, San Antonio reported in 2011 that after nine years and $3 million of adding fluoride, research showed tooth decay hasn't dropped among the poorest of Bear County's children. It has only increased up to 13% that year, 2011. So the other thing about fluoride is it is a communicative toxin. Overexposure, as Dr. Trevino mentioned, dental fluorosis, bone issues, thyroid, neurological issues. These issues are particularly enhanced in infants, children, adolescents and the elderly. So in me speaking here to oppose this, I'm speaking for my daughter and for the children we celebrated here. And for our elderly, of course, and for everyone. The ADA admits that topical fluoride works best if not just as a toothpaste. More cities are reversing the decision to fluoridate, especially like Abilene, Texas in 2024, out of an abundance of caution. Right? As mentioned, this is, you know, the 1950s, it's an antiquated system and new research has come out. So solutions would be just real quick, continue this discussion, put it to a vote, educate on fluoride-free options and hopefully make a difference that way. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Jose Salazar.
Can I use the, for a PowerPoint? Yes? Hey, my name is Jose Salazar for the record. I'm a WIPOM Republican Chair. I'm not here for anything for political, but I am here for the children. I care about the health of my community, but mostly I care for the well-being of children. I did a little look into your water report and we do have some fluoride in the water. It's been mentioned before, whether it's in bedrock or it comes from runoff. We do have some that is in there and it does, it does say that it promotes strong teeth, which is accurate. But also, I also looked up EPA and I looked up some questions and answers on fluoride. What is the standard, where there is a standard to prevent skeletal fluorosis, there's a standard to preventing a tooth discoloration or pitting, especially in children prior to the eruption of their teeth? What were the findings of the new risk and exposure assessment? Well, it dealt with skeletal and dental fluorosis, which is a condition that, that affects the joints. Data indicate that fluoride, that fluoride exposure levels among the population have increased the last 40 to 50 years, resulting in an increase in some effects on teeth. And why has exposure to fluoride increased? Well, other than it being in the soil and bedrock, as we have some of it here in our water, currently exposure to fluoride comes from more sources, including fluoridated dental products such as toothpaste, mouthwash, as well as a voluntary addition to, of fluoride to drinking water. Are children, are children or adults exposed to too much fluoride? Well, based on the data evaluated, the EPA conclude that it is likely that some children, eight and younger, are exposed to too much fluoride, at least occasionally while their teeth are forming. Who is at risk from excess of fluoride? It's mostly children. And let me see. And then I also, and I know people will tell me, well, we're going to monitor the levels of fluoride that get put into the water. So then I thought, well, okay, let me look at the work that has been done so far. And I just looked up how many water boil notices in Laredo. And I Googled it and it said in the last five years, Laredo, Texas has experienced eight water boil notices. These notices have been issued due to various issues, including breaks in water mains, potential contamination. One notable incident occurred in 2019 affecting South Laredo and eventually expanding citywide lasting 17 days. In 2021, another citywide boil notice impacted residents for over a week. More recently, in 2022, a boil notice affected parts of central, south and east Laredo for almost two weeks. And then, of course, you remember about a year ago, city of Laredo declares local state of disaster due to citywide boil notice. The city of Laredo has declared a local state of disaster in response to citywide boil notice, boil water notice issued on October 10, 2024. And then finally, the city of Laredo lifts the boil water notice nationwide. The city of Laredo, Dr. Trevino, has officially lifted the boil water notice. So do I have confidence that this can be done and done safely? And, and that children can be kept from suffering any physical or health ailments? I don't have the, the confidence. I think that our money would be spent better fixing the problems that we currently have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So with that being said, I would like to hear from utilities and Health Director about their findings and recommendations.
Mayor, may I share my comments?
Go ahead.
Hello, Dr. Alex, but I, I won't keep you too long. I really appreciate everyone coming and, and sharing their comments. You know, one of the speakers, Mrs. Spinosa, mentioned that the addition of fluoride started in, I think she said 1935, here in, in the United States, in, in the north. But here in 1946, the City of Marshall became the first city in Texas and one of the first three cities in the United States to implement community water fluoridation. For over 70 years, the addition of fluoride to drinking water has benefited over 66% of the US population. And right now, it is recommended at that level that was being discussed, 0.7 parts per million, because of the benefits to children and adults to prevent tooth decay. So prior to the 1940s and 30s and 40s, there was a lot of tooth decay in our country. And many adults reached adulthood without their teeth because of the decay. But then there were populations in our country that didn't have that problem. And when they studied why, they found that naturally occurring fluoride in the water was giving, carried, carries tooth decay prevention to that particular population who drank the water where the naturally occurring fluoride was. And that's how it developed. Over the years, scientists have come and, and identified what the most beneficial amount of fluoride is, 0.7 parts per million. And as our speaker showed, Laredo naturally has 0.5 to 0.6 parts per million, if, if that is still a true data point at this stage. Which, I will be quite honest, I couldn't find that information in, in my research for this, this topic. My interest in bringing this forward was the understanding that Laredo currently doesn't provide fluoride in its water. And yet it is been shown beneficial by, and supported by our own Texas Health and Human Services organization, the American Dental Association, the Association of State and Territorial Dental Directors. But the recommendation is for 0.7 parts per million. So not only is there an interest to see that we reach that level for the benefit of our kids, and these are kids who don't always have access to the dentist. I mean, we just also heard that there are, there's a shortage of dentists in our community and they don't always receive dental care until it's an issue that's of grave concern. But in, in addition to that, if it's, if, if children are not learning proper dental care, then they should be able to receive benefits of some protection to their teeth through public water systems, just like 66% of the rest of the country. And that was my interest in bringing it forward. Because we do have a limit to where you'll see some not, not terribly detrimental to your health, but detrimental to the function of your, formation of your teeth at higher levels, there's another interest to regulate fluoride. To make sure if we do have naturally occurring fluoride, that we are making sure it doesn't reach levels above. What I read was four, four parts per million, that then you would be concerned about the integrity of, of your teeth if you continued to drink water at that level for extended periods of time. So that was my interest in, in bringing this item forward. And I'm looking forward to hearing our Utilities Director speak a little bit about fluoride in Laredo's water.
Dr. Alex, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
So I just want to say a few disclaimers. Is this is one of the most controversial issues I've seen in my life, when it's about adding fluoride, removing fluoride. The cities that have fluoride have been, you know, can we remove it and vice versa? So I just want to say that, number one. Number two, I'm not a physician. We have abundance of fantastic doctors in this room. So if there is anything about health, I'm not the right person, but I will talk about the evidence, the data, and then it's up to the Council to decide how they want to proceed. So I want to start, maybe a lot of this already you hear from, from everyone you hear today. So fluoride is a natural element in, in the environment. It's in the rocks and other places. The way we live in the, in the river here, the Grande, we're at the downstream, so a lot of that mineral or element is dissolved in the, in the water there. Of course, Counselor, as you mentioned, it reduced tooth decay, some of the evidence there by prestigious medical agencies, like CDC and WHO, the World Health Organization. Some counts that if you exceed certain limits, you are exposed to certain different illnesses and skeletal fluorosis. I think the biggest issue today is the public policy piece, is the ethical concern. Is it a mass medication without individual choices, like the vaccine thing? So again, I'm just trying to show the issues. Some cities in the US have added fluoride, some of them stopped adding that. It could be cost, it could be just community. So there's different reasons for that. Houston, Buda, and College Station have removed fluoride. But I want to get more into the science here and talk about what are we talking about today? Just to make sure we are all measuring things or apples to apples. So if it is above 7.7 milligram, it is considered a little bit of higher risk of mild fluorosis, but it's still safe until you hit the two and then it really becomes more complicated. Below seven, some loss of cavity prevention. And that's also the same thing as, you know, you go up, it's high risk. Sorry, mild risk, you go lower, then there is some loss of cavity. Seven is the, the, you know, the right number there as recommended by CDC and EDA. But again, I just want to emphasize one important thing. This is not an enforceable standard. This is not chlorine or E coli or whatever. It's a, it's a best objective standard based on best research in the medical system. So let's talk about what's, what do we have in Laredo now? The red, the red line that you see there is the top, is the 4 milligram or PPM that we're talking about. This is something that at, at that point, there are some kind of, you know, medical concerns and issues. Right now, from the last four years, the Laredo water system has been around 0.65 to 0.7. So the river system itself is exactly the perfect number we want without touching that system. Now, why I'm saying that? Because it seems like, if you look a little bit away from the, the valley areas, the cities that add fluoride are in, in Texas, they're around 0.3. So in order for them to get to the 0.7, they're adding that complimentary piece of fluoride. So if you go to Austin, it's 0.3. Other cities that, they're 0.25. So they want to get to a 7 or 0.7 and we are already there. So the line that you're seeing there, it fluctuates up and down, but right now we are exactly where we need to be without doing anything. So what is the summary is? Yes, Laredo?
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So you just said that there's no need to add fluoride?
No need to add fluoride.
Because it's already naturally there?
Yes.
And if we add more, it would be dangerous?
So.
Potentially.
So if you look at the numbers, the fluctuation, it's not 0.7 always. You know, it's 0.65, 0.7, 0.65, it goes, depends on the river thing. So if we need to add fluoride, it will be the increment of 0.65 to 0.7. And I did the math, if we just buy self-monitoring systems and add that exact portion, we're looking around 350,000 a year, just to keep that perfect number there. And we cannot guarantee that on continuous basis.
But we have other issues like, you know, the current, that would be on top of the job that you all are already doing. It would be an additional task.
Correct.
Cost and everything.
But that was my slide, is we already there, we're optimal right now. We have the issues of order and taste, we need to deal with the outages and, and ensure that we continue our regularity compliance, which was impacted, as you know, with, with the water boil advisory. So the short answer, Counselor, we're in good shape, we're exactly where you think we need.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Just real quick, how long have you had this data?
We, we monitor this for, like, I, I know we got this, we produce our own reports annually. TCEQ produced their own data for the river on different spots. So we have, I think I've seen the five, six years in the past. That's consistent with, with what I showed you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for this. Guys, do you remember that time last year when we had five hours of public comment on people being worried about the arts being defunded? And then Mr. Neff told us at the end that, actually, there's no way that can happen because the money needs to be in the circle? Okay. Another example of where we could have told us that at the beginning and maybe, and even informed the public that and maybe, and maybe someone could have called Councilmember Segaro and said, hey, by the way, we're already good. So just to save our valuable meeting time, that would just be my request.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, well, this item clearly specifies to investigate. I want to thank Doctor here for the, for his presentation. With that being said, you know, it's great to know that we're at that level because we're upstream. So I would like to just make a motion to table item.
Second.
Mayor, if I may, just.
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with you. I just, I mean, thank you so much for bringing this information in. You know, it's, by everything that's changing right now, bringing that services and working with, along with the, with the city management. I know that right now, we've been going through budget and I'm, I'm not trying to put my colleague out there, but we're being going through budget, we're going through, you know, changing the pipings, the lines, you know, doing those, the personal lines. So it changes a lot, you know? So there's a lot of things, information that we need to gather. Having six years, but seeing this, that seeing that we're, we're there, we're 0.6, oh, 0.6, that we should be, we, we're awesome. So thank you so much for the hard work you have. We'll hopefully continue. But if it does change, bring it back to us. And I hope you do bring it back to us so we can, you know, make a change in that, in those, in that, that project.
Mayor, if I may? We, we do report.
Yes. Excuse me, you have a motion and a second to table. There's no more discussion for the second. Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Your item. Next item.
Thirty-three, if I'm mistaken.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three, discussion with possible action on working with our federal representatives on creating federally or federal underserved designation to address our veterinarian shortage and any matters related thereto. Reason I brought this up is as a long-term solution in areas where we're underserved with veterinary services. We currently invest over $4 million in our shelter and that's not to include ancillary services with enforcement and other departmental involvement. But we're still seeing challenges in the horizon. So we, we've been discussing with our federal representatives on creating identifiable underserved areas for veterinary services because it's an invaluable service. So we can request for assistance in these areas, especially because we're seeing the need for vet services, especially for spaying and neutering to control our animal population. So my first motion would be to continue to work with our federal representatives to help create this designation at a federal level and share our local experiences. I will also discuss with other border mayors so that resources can be available. Second your motion, Mayor.
Mayor, may I?
That is my motion, second. Go ahead.
The designation of being federally underserved for veterinary services, what department at the federal government does this fall into?
Dr. Chamberlain? Can I answer that?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. Dr. Richard Chamberlain, your Public Health Director. Of course, I also have Ms. Lauren Bluestone here, our Animal Care Services Assistant Director. And we did put together a, a quick presentation regarding the veterinary shortages in Laredo, just to give you a little bit more insight on that question that you had. Councilmembers here, wrong. And so the current veterinary crisis in Laredo, we have a total of 15 total veterinarians, 4.5 million acres to cover in about an estimated 235,000 livestock and pet count. And so our border position creates a unique challenge for cross-border disease threats, extensive ranch operations and the critical gaps in both companion animal and livestock veterinary care. And so understanding the federal shortage designations with health professional shortages areas and medically underserved areas, which are provided or designated by HERSA, which actually today we got an update that we became severe in our health professional shortage area. We went from a score of 14 to 18, not so good, but that information just came in today, FYI. And so these are the two different designations that exist through HERSA. Researching, which is something that I was able to find with Ms. Bluestone, USDA's Veterinary Shortage Designations System. And so with that, you do have the USDA NIFA or NIFA, which is the National Institute for Food and Agriculture, manages the Veterinary Medicine Loan Repayment Program, which designates veterinary shortage areas and provides financial incentives. So you do have three categories, type one, type two, type three. And of course, financial incentives to bring in those veterinarians to these areas that are designated as a veterinary shortage designation area. And so with that, there is a current designation for Webb County, which is TX-55, which includes Webb County, Starr County, Duval, and Jim Hogg. And as you can see there, which is a critical need because only six veterinarians are certain, it's 160,000 cattle, 8,000 goats, 210 horses. Actually, it's just a model case, it's not specific, of course, to our companion or pet population. But of course, this is an active designation that Webb County currently does house or have. So the companion animal gap, while USDA designations addresses food, food animal and public health veterinary needs, they don't adequately address companion animal care shortages in Laredo. So our current challenges are long wait times for pet appointments, limited emergency care options, overwhelmed animal shelters, residents traveling outside of Laredo for care, and growing pet population with insufficient services. And so engaging our federal representatives is our strategic approach, which we can prepare a congressional briefing package, which of course our mayor just alluded to right now. Prepare key, brief, keep, our, brief our key representatives with, of course, our congressmen and our state senators, coordinate with our state veterinarian, and monitor the nomination cycle for these designations. But realistically, what we're looking for here at the federal level is to expand the USDA shortage designation criteria, which we would advocate for including border-specific risk factors and juvenile disease response capacity in our designation criteria. But if you really hone in on number three, which is create an animal, a companion animal designation. So propose a new companion animal veterinary underserved area designation to address urban and border community pet care needs via the USDA shortage designation criteria, type four, but of course, we know that there's only type one, two, and three. So four would be our recommendation. And we'll pause there for any additional questions. And I'll have Ms. Lauren jump in as needed.
All right, go ahead. No, ma'am.
Just if you have questions, I'm here.
Any questions?
I, the, when the policy action that you have on number two to increase funding for the Veterinary Medicine Loan Repayment Program with specific allocations for Texas, Mexico border counties, do they do that in other parts of the country?
They do not. It's 25,000 standard across the board.
So, so, so there is a repayment program for vets?
Correct.
And you're saying to create one that's, that focuses on our area?
On our area and that'll also increase that, that level of award of the 25,000 for repayment on the annual basis to go up to 40, 50.
I, I think, you know, when we're talking about the shortage of veterinarians, there are 38 veterinary schools in the entire world. And those costs to create a veterinary school program are quite high. I think the last two schools that were created were private, private ventures. So they're not connected to any academic center and their, their costs are quite significant. But it just shows the, the difficulty in creating these programs and, and, and trying to get more veterinarians into the system. Because it is a four-year program. The veterinarians will tell you that, you know, it's much harder than medical school because in medical school, you're only dealing with one species. And in vet school, you've got like 26. And, you know, three stomachs and two chamber hearts, or maybe we do have four chamber hearts. Things that are much more broad than what the medical school student faces in, in a medical school program. But I, I think, you know, this, bringing up these actions is a great idea because it's not just a shortage here in our community, it's a shortage everywhere.
All right.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. So these are federal actions. Is there something, you know, we? Is there something, you know, we can contribute locally to as far as incentives for veterinarians? I mean, obviously, you know, we just passed a budget, but, you know, something to look into for, because we've talked about doing incentives for physicians coming here, so like dipping into our own money to bring in more physicians. I mean, could we add, could we eventually like come up with an approach to add our own incentives?
I, yeah. I would say I think we first need to look at making the veterinary position a full-time position versus a contracted position and then offering incentives for, you know, with the caveat that there's a two-year, three-year limit to, like you have to work two to three years in order to get X, Y, Z incentive versus just the contract that we have right now. I think that would be step one.
And if we do that, I mean, working for the city of Laredo by definition qualifies you for the federal public service loan forgiveness. So anyone with student loans, regardless of what job or what they studied, they could be, they could be the receptionist right here at City Hall and literally after 10 years, they would get all their student loans forgiven.
I just got mine forgiven two months ago.
Congratulations. So my, so my point is, you know, we, we, that's part of the tactic and then they have a, they'll have a minimum monthly payment based on their income, right? Which if they have a full-time position, you know, 10% of whatever that is divided by 12, that's their monthly payment. Maybe the city could commit to paying that monthly payment for them, whatever that turns out to be, like whenever we do budget for the full-time, but I know that's a couple steps ahead, but just thoughts.
And there's also the potential council member to bring in those veterinarians as a potential contract full-time employee so they can come into the Laredo, support the Laredo system, have their private practice, but also be part of PSL effort as well.
They would have, in that case, they'd have to be considered a full-time employee by the city to get that.
Thank you all. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Mayor, motion up, open up planning and zoning, public hearing, and introductory ordinances. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Yes, I have one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, I retract.
Yeah, Mayor, you have a, you had a motion and a second.
Okay, on this item.
On this item.
Yes, motion and second.
For 34.
The motion was to work with federal representatives on creating federal underserved designation to address the veterinary shortage and share local knowledge.
Okay. That's motion and second. Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Number 34. Discussion with possible action on creating, adopt, and/or foster a pet event to mitigate most recent and unexpected transition of pets, city council to, to the city of Laredo, and any matter related thereto. Now, the reason we brought this up, I placed this item 34 on the agenda was to address some of the many challenges that we have with animals without a home in our community. We recently had an unplanned event where the city had to take in some animals, a total of 29, and put some stress on the city's resources. But I do want to thank the animal control shelter, the animal shelter, and their hard work. On Saturday, there were up to 14 adoptions and from the latest number and being told that there were up to 21 adoptions. While this is good news, we have more work to do because the last thing we want to do is put any of the remaining animals down due to lack of space or resources. So my motion would be to continue adoption or foster campaigns that are ongoing, but to instruct management to create a clear public messaging and enforcement in our existing ordinance when it comes to educating the public on responsible pet ownership.
Second for discussion, Mayor. Motion, second for discussion. Mayor, I'm completely for this. I, I just ask for our PIO to come up with some type of a campaign and I'd ask my colleagues to please share it on your personal pages, on your, on your council member pages, directors, staff, anybody that's involved with the city of Laredo to get this going because these animals need to be adopted. We simply just can't have them there over and over again, long periods of time. You all know, we all know what happens to those pets after they're there for a while. So if you can, once our PIO gets that information out and we can put those programs out, that program out, please share it as much as you can, our staff, our directors, our, our management team, and of course, my colleagues as well, the mayor as well. And I'm sure we all will because this, this all hits home. It really, really does. Thank you. All right. Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to commend Ms. Bluestone and her staff because they did run this past Saturday, a Clear the Shelter event. And it was promoted, I, I know I promoted it on my page. It was promoted to do just that. It's an annual campaign. It is about finding homes for all of the dogs and cats in the shelter. It is part of an ongoing list that I think Ms. Bluestone has crafted from a, a, a program that really didn't seem to be interested in creating that public engagement to now a full-blown effort to look for every angle to find families that want companion animals and, and get a match. I know earlier in the spring, there was a great runway event hosted by some of the beauty pageant winners and they had a beauty pageant show for the, the dogs that were there at the shelter. In any little niche or different type of theme that you can think of, I think our shelter has gone out of its way to try to promote it and again, to try to find that match and, and move those animals to forever homes. So I want to thank you and your staff because I, I do think these efforts are due to your enthusiasm and energy and also guidance there with our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion and second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We're on number 38. Dr. Chamberlain. Number 38. Go ahead.
Yeah, so 38, this is discussion of possible action to pursue a request or proposal for a pavement preservation program to preserve and extend the life of more city streets in a cost efficient manner. There's incident there too, co-sponsored by council members Gilbert Gonzalez and Ruben Gutierrez Jr. I believe Mr. Ophila is here and has a presentation from the, the one that he, a couple slides he was going to give us last week, just to kind of add to this. But from what I understand, we have, oh, he appeared. Hey.
He appeared.
Hi, Mr. Ophila.
Wait, mouthwash.
And just to set the table, I, I believe, and management can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe we have $4.2 million roughly in reserve COs from previous years, pre-bond election that can be used moving forward. And then just last week, we passed $5 million in tax notes for fiscal year '26, which has us at 9.2 million for the upcoming foreseeable future available for street paving and preservation. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, please, if that's not true, but then, Mr.
Mayor, if I may, John O'Neal for the record, Public Works. My presentation for the budget contains that if we can move that up, I'll kill two borders, one stone, two items that are on the agenda.
All right.
We're taking off. Yes? All right, so I'm going to go and start and I'm going to touch on what you talked about since it's in here. Okay, our organizational chart consists of eight different divisions within Public Our proposed budget consists of 15.6, almost 7 million, 166 FTEs, divided again within the eight different divisions of the department. Any questions? The SOP submitted in February 2025. And again, there's eight different chapters that describe everything within the department. Appendices, I believe there's nine different appendices. And again, that has been completed and submitted. One thing I'd like to touch on real briefly is the cost of reconstruction materials. The longer we wait to construct, the more it's going to cost. And that shows you different, for example, the hot mix for paving when I first started with the city was at $28 a ton. Now it's at 77 with $6 difference two, two years ago. The coaling, that's what we use for the patching of potholes. Again, $85, now it's at 93, that's a $13 change. It's not cheap.
Yeah.
And concrete, again, we have four different vendors. We've gotten better. At one time, we only had one concrete plant that was.
Go ahead.
The city.
Mr. Ophila has a question. So for the paving, that's what we use for your, your typical resurfacing, the cold mix is what you use for potholes?
Yes.
Okay, and then the concrete, okay.
Yeah, the hot mix, well, once it cools off, it gets hard. And again, concrete, we have four different vendors, so again, that's why the prices vary. One of them has not changed its price. We try and use them, but they're constantly busy due to their pricing. All of them are very, very good at material and service. Paving projects, we look in the bottom, in the red, 413, 477, and this year, 422, the year hasn't finished. The light blue, that's our miscellaneous, which is a lot of your priority funding, parking lot projects that are funded. The dark blue, the tall ones, again, that's with our money going to Public Works for y'all's districts.
Go ahead. Those, the numbers, like 373, that's, what units are we talking here? Is this?
That is from the Public Works funding that we get.
But are these?
For the districts.
Are these blocks? Is this money?
Blocks.
Block, blocks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, everything's in blocks. Next one. I'm going to start talking now about what your item was about, the pavement surface preservation program. Lot of our streets, we pave them, we ignore them till it's next, the next round comes, but we're a little way, a little behind in our paving. So what I, this, what this program is going to do, choose streets that were paved anywhere from 10, four, five years ago and come back and give, preserve them longer by either putting some type of oil-based material on it and give them another five to seven, eight years of life. So I'm asking for permission to go out on our RFPs or bids, I believe, because I'm already have the paperwork ready to be sent out. And I'm proposing 2 million this year. This, we do have a total of 9.4 million. So we use 2 million of that and again, but more, some of you councilors might want to contribute part of your priority funding. And if I go out for 2 million, I won't be able to use your money. So I want to go a little higher. I don't have to, I go out for 2.5, doesn't mean I have to use 500,000. I can still, I can still keep it at 2 million. If you want to contribute some of your priority funding, you, there'll be enough gap there to contribute.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead. Okay, so basically, you're, you're estimating you would use about 2 million depending on, you know, the, the proposal that comes back, but you're saying we should go for 2.5 just to leave some wiggle room for districts to add additional money in, you know, if there's a change order, anything like that can be a little bit higher. Okay. And then, Mr. Chavez and Mr. Ophila, this is for streets that have a PCI pavement condition index of at least what?
I want to say you were from 40 to 65, 75.
Okay, because a lot of our streets are.
Depending on the street and the district.
Yeah, a lot of our streets are not in, they're, they're such bad shape that this would not, this would not be acceptable to do because it's just, they're so bad.
See, those type of streets are will not be eligible for this. The streets have to be, again, in good shape, possibly old, but there's no, they're not, you know, they're drivable and again, this is going to give it a clean, smooth surface.
Okay. Any pictures of ones that are candidates or it's just not that? Okay.
Anything, I mean, around City Hall.
Yeah, no, that's.
Anything around City Hall, a lot of them have been paved. We paved those back to 19 and 2013, maybe? Any of those streets would be eligible.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ophila, I got a question for you. Typically, since I've been here, you've gotten, you've had a budget of $5 million for street paving. Do you typically go through the $5 million at the end of the fiscal year?
No.
No. You still have some in reserve from '24?
That is correct.
Approximately, how much did you have from '24?
4.2, I believe. 4.2.
From '24?
No.
From '24?
Last several years. That's what it's added up to, 4.2.
But the leftover last several?
Last several years, something like 3.8.
That you had left over. And, and the reasons?
No, that's what I used.
That's what you used. So you had 1.2 left last year. So, and the reasons why those 5 million are not being used is because of the materials that you, you have said that we've had issues getting material, or is it because of our machinery that have, that have problems?
No, I mean, our machinery does sometimes, but we do have two paving machines, one breaks down. We usually don't stop. The times we do stop is when, again, Tech College is about to start paving this coming Monday, they're only going to give us three tons, which is equivalent, 300 tons per day, which is equivalent to three blocks. So on a regular day, we can do up to 800 tons a day.
What have you spent so far this year of your $5 million budget for '25?
For the 5, I believe we spent about 3.2.
So far this year? Great, thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And my understanding is whatever we, proposals we get, this would be $2 million of them come, whoever that is, come in and they do it, not?
We, we will choose the streets, which is, 2 million will give us about 500 blocks, which is about 31 miles and 62 blocks per district. Okay? That's at 2 million, 2 and a half million, 625 blocks, 39 miles or 78 blocks per district.
Mayor, for me?
Go ahead.
Does that include the Nester Park?
No, because I don't believe the Nester Park will be a candidate for this.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ophila, how does, so the pavement surface preservation program is different from the usual street paving, asphalt paving that you're doing? But is there an, I, I understood with the bonds that there would be funds to completely reconstruct the street so that it would go down to the, the bare minimum and reconstruct it for another 20-year life? Is that a different type of paving?
I didn't recommend that. I don't know where you heard that from, but reconstructing a street, again, to me, there's no street in Laredo that needs to be reconstructed, no.
Okay.
Possibly work the surface, again, there's a lot of streets in Laredo, like in, what is it, Wright Ranch? See, that, all that was due to water. I mean, it was quicksand under the asphalt and the concrete.
Right.
So we want to, can fix that and the street will be fine. So reconstructing of a street, I've been here 27 years and my, Mr. Joe Gerda, who was a former director, who started in 1978, they bought a reclaimer and they sold it brandy.
So this, this is a?
This is just a sealer for the streets that's going to give you about an eighth to a sixteenth. You're going to feel the smoothness, like it would just overlay and it's going to seal all the cracks if there were to be any, or if when the aggregate or the rocks already sticking out a little bit, it's going to be, you know, bring it back to its original condition when it was researched.
So extend the length of the street?
It's going to extend the life of our streets, yes. And I'm expecting about $4,000 of standard city block, but depending on the width, but if it's a 27 by 300, we're looking at about 4,000 and we're putting about 2 million, maybe it'll go down to, I don't know, should be less than $4 to $4 a yard. And they come, whoever gets the bid or the RFP, it's a turnkey. We will not provide labor or machinery. It's turn, turnkey. So we continue with the paving program. I've heard the city manager say time and time again, and you all will agree that we need to see more in the streets, in the rest of Laredo to see. And I think this will, this is a great avenue to go to take because we'll have the paving going and then these guys all over town and they're going to see a lot of activity. And there's barely any downtime when we're doing this program on, on the streets.
I'm going to go out for a RFP of a max of 2.5 million dollars using leftover CO bonds from previous years for this project.
Second. Motion second.
May I offer an amendment? Are we then going to offer $50,000 from each of our priority funds to contribute or this you don't need?
That's up to you. You don't have to contribute. I'm going to use 2 million out of the city's budget, my budget, and if you want to contribute, you may. If I put out 2 million and you want to contribute, we're only going to be, be able to go up 25%, which I'm going to have to bring it back. So I'm going out at two and a half. We're going to use 2 million and if we use it, if not, we lose it. They lose it.
And then we have a contingency of a maximum contingency of 25%?
25% of off the original contract, yes.
Yeah, so it could technically, with that, it could go up to 3 point something million if, if enough money wanted to get thrown in, so.
Right.
Okay, so 2.5?
Motion and second.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, for me?
Go ahead.
If we make the motion for three million, does it take away needing to bring it back for reconsideration?
You can put three million, yes.
That's probably better.
Be even better.
I accept an amendment.
All right, so we have a motion amended?
And a second.
And a second.
Thank you. My last part of my presentation is the city of Laredo now has column berms that we wanna offer to the general public.
It's following that motion.
I have a question for finance.
Go ahead.
Mr. Neb, is the million dollars is included with the budget? We don't have to worry about transferring? Okay, great, thank you.
They followed the paving fund already.
All you did is solidify what we've already built the foundational for, so.
Again, the column berms, something new for the general public.
One second. We have a motion and a sentence. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Go ahead.
So this will be the first time we have the column berms for the general public. Those are called column berms, and where you've actually put the actual are called niches. Each column berim has forty-eight niches. We bought, we paid approximately about forty thousand, ten thousand dollars for each, which is four of them. And with the price I'm about to show you, this is what we're recommending, this is the motion item two. The Calvary Catholic Cemetery also has them. There's five different rows in the catholics. Ours has four. Depending on the row, for example, in the one in the yellow, the top row is twenty-eight hundred dollars. After the services is forty-one hundred. Ours, the top row will be twenty-six fifty. Each niche is going to be depending on the height, anywhere, the lowest row is seventeen hundred, up to the top row being two thousand. It's in between what we charge right now for an actual gray side. And that should bring in a parking by four hundred and fifty to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which are four niches. And we're also saving space for those, because it's small space, and we can put up to a hundred and ninety-two niches inside. And this is already on the agenda, and we'll bring it back in the future with the resolution.
Great job. All right, thank you.
Motion to move on.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, if I can bring up planning and zoning, public hearing, introductory ordinances, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. All right. Here's Mr. Joaquin Rodriguez.
I'll start. Planning and zoning, public hearing, introductory ordinance, number one, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a nationalization of vehicles and enterprises on Lot One, Block One, Fragoso, Oliva Flat, and Lot Twelve B. Block Two, Tesoro Plaza, located at five hundred Tesoro Lane, and fifty-two fifteen, Tesoro Plaza Drive. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff reports, staff supports the application. Public hearing number two, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a planned unit development overlay for single-family townhouses on Lot One, Block Two, Via San Agustín, Unit One, located at seventy-nine eleven Atlantic Drive, from Block B dash three, Committee Business District, to B three, PUD, Committee Business District, Planned Unit Development. The plan, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed planned unit development overlay and amending condition number seven to remove the minimum lot area of two thousand two hundred square feet and add the minimum lot area of one thousand six hundred square feet. Staff supports the application. Public hearing number three, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a bar, bar at lots one and two, Block One, San Isidro McPearson, Phase Four, located at ninety-eight oh two McPearson Road, Unit One twenty-five, an outdoor patio only, dash one nine, one thousand nine hundred and ten square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit, and staff did not support the application. Number four, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lots one and two, Block Ten Seventy-One, Eastern Division, located at nineteen oh one Ligarte Street, from B one, Limited Business District, to B three, Committee Business District. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed change, staff supports the application. Number five, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit of the tobacco shop on Lot Five, Block Two, Santa Rita Commercial Subdivision, located at fifty-six eighteen US Highway Eighty-Three South, Unit One, one thousand square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed special use permit, and staff did not support the application. Number six, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for heavy machinery sales and rental outdoor display on lots two, three, four, five, Block Nine Thirty-Nine, the Western Division, located at thirty-seven oh three, thirty-seven fifteen, and thirty-seven seventeen Sandario Avenue. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit, staff supports the application. Public hearing number seven, public hearing and introductory ordinance amending the city of Laredo Land Development Code, Section twenty-four point six-three, entitled permitted land uses to clarify that the storage of flammable and explosive products are allowed in M dash two zoning district and in M one zoning districts with a special use permit, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing the servability clause, and providing publication and effective date.
Ready? Okay. This is for public hearing number one.
Yes, sir.
Mayor? Are we going on?
Yeah, we're gonna go on number one. For or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Mayor two?
Mayor, public hearing number two, we do have a public comment.
All right. Oscar Castillo?
Oscar Castillo, good evening, city council members and mayor and city manager's office. I'm here, Oscar Castillo, representing Arriba, and just wanted to talk a little bit about this development. This is a townhome development, it's twelve acres, twelve point five acres, and it is, it was a very good process, the PUD. It was fine-tuned with the help of the planning department. We got a very nice park, point acre park. Connectivity, the traffic was looked at. It was a very good process with the park department, the planning and zoning. Just wanna make sure the communication, you know, it was amended on planning and zoning because the communication said twenty-two hundred minimum, and the square footage of the lots go from sixteen hundred to twenty-eight hundred, so just wanted to make sure it gets amended and to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Let's see, you wanna ask another question? There was a clarification on that?
The clarification that it went from twenty-two to twenty-eight hundred?
No, 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 from sixteen is the smallest one, and, you know, they vary, there's a hundred and sixty lots, and they vary from sixteen hundred, the minimum lot, to twenty-eight hundred, or one sixty, but the minimum would be sixteen hundred.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close and introduce.
All right.
Sorry, apologies. Can I add just one condition? I've already spoken with the applicant, and they are, they're okay with it. We wanna add a condition that the PUD is restricted to the site plan attached to Exhibit A, which is made part hereoff for all purposes.
Name for the, for a record, please. Name and-
Name and title for the record.
Name and title for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
Apologies, unless I got a planning and zoning.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, with that, I'll motion and introduce it as amended.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number three? For or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number four, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second.
Mayor, I refuse on item four.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to close and introduce?
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number five, for or against, for or against, for or against?
Motion to close and introduce?
Second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Gerda, can you explain why you do not support item number five?
Absolutely. Would you like a bit of a presentation, or I can just answer the question? Basically, it's the distance. The requirements are that these types of uses need to be eight hundred feet from a residential district or use, and the measurement is a hundred and forty feet. They don't meet the parking requirement, but it's only very slightly, they're missing two spaces, so it's the distance.
And that's eight hundred, sorry, a hundred feet from quite residential community?
I can show you, let me, let me get there.
Isn't that College Heights? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Isn't that College Heights, if I'm not mistaken?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
It is College Heights. And that building is facing eighty-three?
That's correct.
Okay.
Almost there. Apologies. Okay, here we go. So this is the, this is the location, and you see right here, here is your residential. This is what the location looks like from the street view. This is your signage. This is our zoning map. And I'm trying to get to the, to the distance. If you see right here, the ordinance requires that it's measured from the structure without regard to intervening structures to the closest boundary of the residential district, so that measures a hundred and forty feet.
Go ahead. Is there a fence behind the home, is there a fence separating the homes from the business?
It appears so, if I can, it appears that there is a fence back there.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
The building was there before the development, or was it after the development?
That's a good question. I don't think I have that.
If I'm mistaken, if I'm, if I'm corrected, that building was there before the development. That's a new subdivision called Santa Elena.
You're probably or possibly correct. The use, though, is not there.
I'm sorry?
But the use is not there. The use is not there yet.
The use of the building wasn't there?
The tobacco shop use.
Oh, okay. So, but what I'm trying to say is, if that building was there before, you know, for, it's been there for a while, when the intentions of constructing something or having something, or building a business there, they shouldn't, you know, they shouldn't get punished because they had the intentions to create something or have a business before they, you know, the, these rules.
The zone is completely appropriate for most retail uses. It's just the tobacco shop has additional requirements imposed upon it through the special use permit.
But the building is facing eighty-three?
That's correct.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So there was an item in District Three for a tobacco shop right next to the residential neighborhood, and it was, if it was a hundred feet, that was a lot. And I, I guess we, I come back to the fact that we passed these things with the intent that we wanted to discourage addiction to tobacco products or use of tobacco products by where we feel there will be families and children. And at the time, it was, it wasn't a couple of years ago that we proposed to increase the distance of a tobacco shop from a residential community because at that time, we felt that the public health need should impact our decisions on zoning. And I understand the need from the small business owner to look for tenants to fill his building and the attraction of it being on the highway, but maybe the attraction of being on the highway means that there are even more opportunities to look for a different type of business that doesn't step on the actions that we took not two years ago to try to make a, you know, a small improvement to public health by diminishing or reducing the accessibility of teenagers to tobacco shops. So, you know, I respect both arguments, but I just, I weigh still heavily on the public health side, and I did have an item in my district where I also fought to make sure that we respect our previous decision, and I won't be voting for him.
Motion to close and introduce?
All right, second motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number six, Mayor. Number six? For or against, for or against, for or against? Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion seven. Motion pass. Number seven, for or against, for or against, for or against? Motion to close and introduce? Motion?
Second, but Mayor, just wanna ask a comment.
Go ahead.
This is a change because before the change, we were allowing them on M ones without a special use?
That, that's correct. Currently, the land development code in the verbiage under the special use permit, it allows it. Basically, those are bulk ground fuel storage tanks. They're allowed in an M two as a use by right, but it does require the special use permit in an M one. What's getting clarified here is that it's gonna be identified in the land use chart. People were getting confused that in the special use permit section, it required the special use permit in the M one, but then in the land use chart, it didn't have it, so there was this-
Oh, it's a housekeeping thing?
Basically.
Okay. All right.
All right, so we have second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Mayor, motion to open up public hearings and introductory ordinances, one, two, three, and to include the supplemental, one, two, three, and four.
Second. We exclude number three at this time?
We haven't gone to discussions yet. Yes, ma'am. All right, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number one?
Manager of the grant, non-exclusive franchise to Ramco Way LLC DBA from Thera Way to use the present and future streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highway sidewalks, easements, and other public rights of the city of Laredo, Texas for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, operating, commercial, container, refuse, gathering, and dispose service, setting forth terms and conditions to govern the franchise, providing the severability clause and savings clause and effective date. Franchise fees will be deposited in the general fund.
You wanna read them all, then we'll go with the-
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead.
They're all being read, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Number two, public hearing and introductory ordinance authorized the city manager to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, city of Laredo detoxification center budget by increasing appropriate revenue managers in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred and twenty. The Texas opioid abatement fund council was formed to ensure the money recovered in the statewide opioid settlement agreement is allocated fairly and spent to an end. The opioid crisis in Texas opioid abatement fund, these funds are available in the detoxification center fund. Number three, public hearing and introductory ordinance, city of Laredo, Texas authorized the city manager to accept an appropriate revenue and expenditures in the amount of one million seven hundred forty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one annually for the treatment of adults with a five percent match for the detoxification department for the term period of September one, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-thirty. The total amount of the grant will not exceed nine million one hundred eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-five. This includes a system agency share of eight million six hundred and seventy-seven, eight hundred and five, and grantees required match your amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety for the life of the grant. Funds will be accounted for in the detoxification department fund.
Number one, supplemental, please?
Yes, yes, sir. Number one, public hearing and introductory, an ordinance amending the city of Laredo Code of Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Building Regulations by Amendment Article Eleven Registration of General Contractors, Subcontractors, Seven, Section Seven Twenty, Administration, Section Seven Twenty-eight, increasing the annual registration fee, severability clause, publication clause, and effective date. Number two, an ordinance, the city of Laredo, Texas, amending- chapter six, animal and foul article one, in general, the Code of Ordinance, is section six dash one-one-nine, registration vaccination permit fees to update six dash one-one-nine registration vaccination permit fees to amend schedule of fees and provide for an effective date. Number three, an ordinance, City of Laredo, Texas, amending Code of Ordinance, is chapter seven, article one, section seven dash two, entitled same amendments and in chapter twenty-four, appendix D permit fees to increase residential building permit via the residential plan review and establish new commercial checking fees in accordance with the House Bill HB eight fifty-two, providing for a new workflow instance plan review fee, providing for a resubmital plan review fee, providing for an expedited plan review fee, providing cumulative and repeater clause, providing a severability clause, providing qualification, providing for a penalty, and declaring an effective date. Number four, Public Health Initiative Ordinance, amended City of Laredo Cemetery Main Fee Orders, which is located in the Code of Ordinance, is chapter eight, article twenty-three, entitled thank fees charged, adding two new sections named the A dash twenty-three, B five, and B six, to establish costs and fees for newly available services at the cemetery, which related to Columbia, Columbarium? That's a new one, and in each services, which is in a manner of story earned.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Number one, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I was, um, hoping to see Ms. Vasquez with Environmental Services. I know, uh, when, um, an item came back earlier and a, and a different agenda for a similar, uh, non-exclusive franchise to a waste company, I'd asked if there was some investigation to see that we don't have all of these franchises to a multitude of companies and perhaps, um, impact the ability for one company to make enough profit. And I was just wondering if you had any information about how many of these companies are there and how many do you think we can support?
We have a total of seventeen.
Name and title for the record, please.
Okay, we, we have twenty, but we sent three letters.
Name and title for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Honorable Mayor, good, good evening, and council. My name is Sara Salivasquez, uh, from, uh, Environmental and Salivas Department.
Thank you.
Presently, we have twenty. We just sent three letters for three, um, franchises that are inactive. So those just to cancel, um, their franchise, those letters just was, were sent out. So on the rest, we have seventeen, of those seventeen, well, actually, all of them start on August, uh, first. We'll have all of them in, in our accounts. The rest before, it was different before, so right now, everybody has, you know, an account, and they have to pay monthly.
And do you?
Their services.
Do you have any, um, idea of how many our city can absorb? Or are we not there yet?
And absorb, how?
That, that, that you, you think can, um.
Oh, how many more can we have?
Yes, how many more do you think can operate, uh, profitably in, in our community?
Well, right now, we don't have a, a threshold, like a minimum or maximum. As long as they provide everything that we, uh, require for a franchise to open, they're able to, you know, there's a, a lot of requirements. And if they meet those requirements and they provide what we need, also with their, with all the paperwork and how they register, the insurance and everything, it's open.
So do, do they get the information about how many other companies similar to them are operating in the city at the time of their application?
Yeah, they have to give us all their information once they apply.
Do they know how many other companies are operating similarly to them? So that they're just aware of the.
Of the competition, of the, of the, of the, how many? That we've been providing that information to them when they open?
We let them know how many, how many we have already.
And actually, we receive their report monthly, so we have the list, and we, and we actually, um, send that information.
I, I think there's a, there's a way then to, to self-control. If they understand the risks that they're taking and we're providing that information.
From their business.
Then I think we are providing a, a service to them.
Go ahead, council.
I, I just think that we should not get involved in the free market system of, you know, business, and they, they should know their, who their competition is. Um, they're providing a service. It's up to them to, in their business practices, you know, run their business. So, um, I don't think we should get involved in, in, the government should get in that type of involvement into the private sector like that.
Okay.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I can probably add a little bit, too. I was just researching some of this as well, too. The state law clearly prohibits restricting entities from contracting with non-exclusive pollers for commercial waste. I do not believe we'll have the ability. I think it's going to be the economy itself that actually is going to, uh, control or manage that, that system.
Right, right.
So, so because of the state law, I don't believe that we can restrict how many franchise agreements we can have.
I, I think, um, just the fact that we provide information so that they understand the competitive, competitive field, I feel like we're doing our service to them, so they understand what they're entering into. And that's all, I, I think with that.
No, and also, the city keeps growing, so it's more competition and more, you know, the trash everywhere, so, and we have a lot of development in the, in the south and the north, right? So it's, I mean, if they want to open the business, they know exactly what they're, you know.
I, I believe we have the ability to help, help manage how they do it, not, not the numbers.
Exactly. Well, with that, I'll, I'll move to close and introduce.
Second.
Thank you.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number two, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number three, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Number one on the supplemental agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Have we read it?
Yeah, four against.
Four or against, four or against, four or against, against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number two, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number three, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Guerra, the, the plan seems pretty comprehensive, and I saw the increases in fees for both residential and the, and the commercial fees increasing, and also how you're very careful to meet the new House Bill eight fifty-two regulations, um, avoiding the, um, basis evaluation and, and finding a way to, to work around that. So to be as fair, I think, as you can be. But there's also, um, an inclusion of demolition fees, and I don't know if those fees were there previously or not. And my question is, is if there is a way for the city to somehow review or, um, connect to a building's historic designation, or perhaps this is something that you already do, and there's some preventive measures in place so that historic buildings aren't demolished without city knowledge?
Well, for historic buildings, all demolitions have to go through the historic board. So we cannot issue any permits for demolition in the historic districts without the approval of the historic board. But of course, that's all contingent and dependent on people coming through for the permit.
Apologies, people coming through?
Getting the permit.
For the, for the demolition?
Yeah.
Are there, are, is there demolition that takes place with unpermitted?
I recall, yes. In my, in my history working with the city, yes, I have, I have witnessed that.
And is there a way to ask the companies who do the demolition to have that be one of the requirements that they're checking for in the historic district?
I mean, the law pertains to everybody. Everybody knows that they have to come through for a permit for demolition. Um, and all of our staff knows that they have to go through historic board. Um, it, I guess it would be a matter of more education. Maybe we could do, uh, work with our PIO office to do a sort of a media blast, just reminding everybody that this is what's required.
For, um, targeting the building owners?
Building owners, contractors, uh, people who do the demol- demolishing of the structures.
Okay, um, is, if, could we move to, the city, Mr. Ned, would you like to comment?
No, I'm sorry.
Um, could, could I, uh, move that we have your office figure out some way to communicate that information so that we can reduce the possibility of, um, unpermitted demolition in our historic district where we have, the city has a great interest for the preservation of those historic buildings?
Now, I want to, I'd just be clear, that the, the occasion that I'm recalling happened quite some time ago. I mean, on the order of more than fifteen years ago. So it doesn't happen every day or all the time.
Mayor, if I may? Yes, go ahead. Just a comment on this. It, it's, it is against the law to do so already, and I think people know that they need those permits to do so. I don't think we need to be searching into this even further. I think it's already done. The people know that it's illegal to be, uh, deconstructing a, a building, right? Or bringing it down. Uh, it's illegal. You need permits to do so, and you all simply will not sign the permit. And if they do continue with the demolition of, they're in violation. And I could, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's a penalty plus jail time?
Oh, I don't know about jail time, but there is citation.
Right, right, but the demolition of a historical building changes it, if I'm not mistaken.
I would have to look, look into that.
Please.
Mayor, if, if I may, I, I'd like to add a comment, so also along the same line, so, uh, any commercial building needs to check for asbestos, and so under state law and then the Texas, uh, State Health Department, uh, they need to meet all those requirements, so it will be definitely be illegal as well, on that side.
Thank you.
All right.
It sounds as if there are several, uh, prosperity measures in place, so I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you for that clarification.
Motion to closing introduce.
Motion, second, any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number four, four or against, four or against, four or against.
Motion to closing introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Council to introduce number four and five, and to include the supplemental, number five as well. No motion, sir. Motion, motion to approve the final reading of ordinances. Number six, with an amendment, I'm sorry, number.
Mayor, yes, um, number five on the supplemental. I'd, I'd like for us to, to review.
Number five is on the table. Motion second, all in favor?
Mayor, if I may, ask one more question?
Okay.
Is this supposed to be on executive session? Number five, on the supplemental? I thought that was an executive session, I see.
If you want to discuss it, we should go over to the executive session, because it, there is a, an offer.
Mayor, if I, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session, um, pursuant to section five-five, one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five-five, one point zero seven two, deliberation about real property, um, and any other relevant actions, following the closed session, the open meeting will reconvene, at which time action, if any, may be taken for items five, seven, on the supplemental, and the exec- and the executive session item on the regular agenda item. Thirty-two.
Second.
And persons with management, legal, and any other personnel that legal deems fit.
On the point of order, are you able to call a thirty-two for that item? I have just a question.
All right, okay. And motion, second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Executive session.
Proceed, as instructed. Second.
Second.
All right, on, on what number, Mayor?
On number five.
Number five. For staff to proceed, yeah, as directed, as directed, number five.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion pass. On number thirty-two, the same, for staff to proceed as directed.
Second, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I would like to, um, also just say, um, to approve the settlement proposal as recommended by the city attorney.
All right.
Second, Mayor.
Second.
As an amendment.
All in favor? Opposed, motion pass.
Item seven, from the supplemental, motion to proceed as, as discussed.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion pass.
Mayor, back to final readings of ordinances, number six. I'd like to amend it at the second reading and approve to close and bring back as a third and final reading. Point of order, uh. I'm sorry, that's on number seven. Number seven. That's on number seven. Number seven. And approve, and approve number six. That's, that's presented. And approve number six, correct.
I'm sorry, where, where are we?
Number, number six. Reading of ordinances, six and seven. First, number six, regular.
On the regular.
Right. Regular agenda. To approve number six, and number seven, as I read the amendment.
All right, second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, eighth through number thirty-one, with the exceptions of?
Twenty and thirty.
Twenty and thirty-two. All right.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number twenty.
Consideration to authorize the city manager to award contract FY twenty-five dash zero seventy-five for ethane oxide ambient air monitoring to AECOM. I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce it. Located at thirteen, six hundred forty, Briarwick Drive, Suite two hundred, Austin, Texas, seven eight, seven two nine, for the City of Laredo Public Health Department dash Air Quality Division. Total costs for field monitoring in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred fourteen, community outrate, outreach in the amount of one thousand, four hundred eighty-two, post-study purchase of New Tech sampling equipment in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty, for a total amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-six. Contract shall commence upon the effective date. All work outlined in this agreement shall be completed before October first, twenty twenty-six. Funding is available in the Public Health Department Fund dash Air Quality Monitoring Division. Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain. It's, it's exciting to see, uh, the, the, going forward with air monitoring for ethane oxide. I do have, um, a couple of questions, because I wasn't able to find, um, a great deal of information about the company that has been chosen to do this. So I, I, I wanted to know if, if it was put out for bid, and then why this company met some of your parameters for the ethane oxide monitoring?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Richard Chamberlain, your Public Health Director. Yes, ma'am, this went out for proposals. Um, it went, it met the, the threshold for the minimum days that it had to be out there posted to, um, attract vendors. We only got two vendors that provided their proposals or our course, our request for qualifications to us. Um, between those two, in, those two different vendors, there, um, after review, it was noted that there was no references provided for the other vendor. Um, this specific vendor, AE COM, did provide references in specific to VOCs and ethane oxide as well, and they included a, um, community engagement component to the, the data and the collection process.
So if, if I could just press you, uh, Dr. Chamberlain, on, um, one of the items, which is the, uh, let's see, the New Tech, let's see, the New Tech sampling equipment. Um, so as you know, uh, the, what we have the, um, the limitation for, for the bi-national air council that is going on with one of our, um, uh, nonprofits, the Rio Grande International Study Center, that has been really invested in ethane oxide monitoring and has also was responsible for setting up the first air, um, ethane oxide air monitoring study that we had in Laredo. There is a Dr. Pelletier who came to, um, some of the public hearings that were held, and he had some more specific questions about that particular, um, piece of this puzzle for the, um, total project that would be awarded to AIRCOM. And, and maybe that gets a little technical, but when this company came forward to do the air monitoring, what kind of, um, product, what kind of results can we expect from them and out, in what timeline?
And so specifically for this product, I can read, I mean, for the overall operation, I can read a little bit if you would allow me. So the sampling, the sampling plan will commence after, of course, they get awarded officially, and, um, we review those documents with them, so it'll be, six sampling events will be conducted. Each event follows a five-day sampling schedule. The sampling locations are still to do, to be determined, but of course, in the immediate area. Um, as we do know, that the higher risk for, um, persons who are exposed are within the immediate area of the sterilization plan, but that's not to discount any type of risk for the surrounding neighborhood. any type of risk for the surrounding neighborhoods and communities that are there in that specific area of the city as well. And so the samples per event would be eight routine ambient samples, one field blank, one duplicate, one spike sample for a total of eleven canisters. Each sample will be collected over a twenty-four hour period for a total of sixty-six canisters to be collected over a thirty-day interval. And that thirty-day interval is specific to this budget cycle that we're currently in. And then, of course, we will push forward into another thirty-day interval with the new budget cycle that comes in in October.
And is the plan, do you believe that this will carry on on a yearly basis? Or is it to evaluate essentially event by event? So we have it done now. Based on what those results are, we'll make a decision to pursue this in the future?
It's our idea that we would, of course, do it now. We would do it again in FY twenty-six. Then with the expertise and the knowledge that we've gained, of course, with our air quality specialists. Hence, that's why we're going to be purchasing the equipment after they're done. So we have it in our stock at Laredo Public Health to continue these types of testings going further as needed as well.
So Laredo Public Health will take over the sampling in the future?
After we get a second run with this vendor to ensure that we are learning how to appropriately operate, send out, disinfect, and retrieve the data from the laboratory.
So that training is built into this model?
This first round, and then, of course, through the second round, and then hopefully by then, we're able to take it on solely as Laredo Public Health.
And you'll send them out to a third party for the actual analysis of the air sampling?
Correct.
And then I guess my final question will be, have we been able to identify where the off-gassing is occurring in order to target that, those areas in particular, since we have zero data on how much off-gassing there is and what those ethylene oxide levels could potentially be?
We made that request through the council's request a couple of months back with a letter being sent to Midwest. That was not provided in a response to us.
And have we attempted to contact logistic companies that would be responsible for transporting these products out?
We have not attempted to contact the logistics companies, except although I would think that they would not provide us that information, but the attempt can be made.
Because I know from past discussions, we had identified FedEx as the potential carrier of moving this product out. And the idea was also to warn FedEx because of the off-gassing that precautions should be taken because of their potential exposure to ethylene oxide.
We'll definitely reach out to them, council member.
Alright, go ahead.
I think it's, we're approving the contract, but I think if we talk about logistics in terms of regions or specific areas, I think we should talk about those in executive session, just because I don't want for these areas that we're going to be monitoring, for them to know when we're monitoring and all that. I think it's important for us to do it randomly and like, not randomly for us, it's planned, but for wherever we're going to be out there in the public, monitoring that we not tell people when we're there. We tell them after we've left. So my request would just be that when we, if we do get into specifics on what the plan is, that we do it in executive sessions until the results come in, and then we can let the public know exactly what we did and what we found.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because there are some warehouses that we may want to check around, but we don't necessarily want to pinpoint where we're going to be checking. Correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, did you?
No, no, that's what I'm going to ask.
Yes, I wanted to just state that the amount of ethylene oxide sterilization that goes on in this community is twice as much as any other place, as any other place in the country, and then more than all of the other sterilizers plants combined. And because of the usage, I think we can be pretty confident that there is ethylene oxide sterilization on a continuous basis in our community, which is why this program and looking to test the air is so important. And I really want to thank Laredo Public Health for being so thoughtful in how you are looking to protect our community and how you are looking to take those samples to make sure that we are meeting the public health needs of the people who live here.
Thank you very much. I needed to bring back, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I needed to bring back.
Oh, yeah, it's swollen it.
Let's do it.
Mayor, before that, if I could just make a quick comment?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank the council also for contributing towards this program. We all put monies in to support the air monitoring program, and then I know, Mayor, it was one of your initiatives. So just want to thank us for going in that direction because I feel that especially now that we're seeing like, action, it's, I think it's going to be good for that specific area that is having this, so we can know exactly what we're dealing with.
Agreed. I will echo the thank you to the mayor and to the council on behalf of the residents, of course, of the City of Laredo, for putting this forward. And there is still more to come with our network system, and we'll have more information about that in the coming weeks.
Alright. Thank you. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And I'd like to bring an item that we've been discussing, general council discussion presentation on the supplemental, number eight. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This is a request by Mayor, discussion with possible action to request management to continue ongoing discussions with Representative Raymond and McLaughlin on possible funding from the state of Texas of adopter system associated with equipment for Laredo that would provide coverage for weather gaps in this area, in our area, and in matters related there to.
Second, Mayor.
Second.
Is that your motion, Mayor?
That's my motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Chief, go ahead.
Good evening, council, Mayor and council, C. Vasco Diaz Jr., Assistant Party Chief with the record. This radar is located at Fire Station fifteen in the airport. It's in the rooftop of the airport. It's been there for about two years. It, the, from what I've been told, that radar is covers between zero and six thousand feet, which the radar from Corpus Christi National Weather Service doesn't cover. Detail line of sight. And so there's, that's the gap that it's filling right there. It's a fifty-mile radius radar, and main purpose is to let us know what's coming in from the mountains of Monterrey, Mexico. And so the company that installed this radar is an early warning radar, EWR. This was purchased by Beto Trevino, who, he's the current owner. Ascending Technologies is the company that currently maintains it, and also they currently maintain a YouTube page, which is called the Radar Weather Radar. People from the public are able to log into this website and to this YouTube page, I'm sorry, and look at the weather. This provides a clearer picture of weather and the atmosphere here in Laredo. Approximately four or five months ago, Detective Department of Emergency Management Chief Nimkitt came over together with Mr. Raymond, Mr. Trevino was there as well. They were interested in the technology, wanting to look at having it at other places in the state. So they did come down and looked at that. We rely heavily on, still on, the National Weather Service reports, right? They monitor this radar as well. They're the ones that give us reporting and extracted data from this radar. And mainly, mainly that's, they're the ones that give us that information. We're no experts in this. We do still monitor it, especially when there's cloudiness or, you know, disturbances that we can see locally. But the National Weather Service is the main people that keep an eye on this radar system for us.
Yes, go ahead.
So National Weather Service, that is, this is still an area that they're willing to cover and report back because we know that there have been significant cuts at the National Weather Service. So this won't, those cuts are not going to impact their ability to still interpret that data for us?
As of now, ma'am, no. They still monitor that radar for us.
But we are responsible for the equipment?
Currently, it is a private purchase, from what I understand, and they keep, maintain and keep that radar operational.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, yeah, just a little bit more on that is that we have been working with the National Weather Service on this as well, too. We spoke with Representative Raymond on this radar unit. I want to make sure that everybody kind of understands this is kind of helping keep this piece operating within the structure of that. We do not want to permanently own or operate the station at that, but it is privately utilized right now. And so we want to help with that process and that if we're able to turn it over to the National Weather Service at some point in time, we would love to have that ability. One of the conversations we had with Representative Raymond as well, too, was that seeking assistance with the, this radar along with some proposed emergency and flood prepared issues that the Fire Department has provided. We're going to, we're making, we're hoping to make a larger request to the state because again, I think what they're wanting to do is try to prepare better than how we ended up responding with Careville. And they want to put in those pieces, and so that's the opportunity that Representative Raymond has provided us. The radar is one, only one piece of that, as well as possible stormwater improvements along the Rio Grande, possible equipment for the Fire Department's emergency response. So the request that the mayor has is to allow the city management to continue working with the representative for this, and so I'd appreciate the ability to do that. And we'll pull it all together into one package and share it with the council as we move forward.
Alright, thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and move that we accept, we ask management to continue ongoing discussions with Representatives Raymond and McLaughlin for possible funding from the state of Texas.
Yeah, we already did.
Sorry, second. Sorry.
Yeah, we voted for it at the beginning, then we had discussion.
Oh, okay. I get it.
Alright, all in favor? We voted, yeah, that's times two.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Item number thirty on the regular agenda needs to be approved?
Number thirty.
That was my question, Mayor. May I continue with that item, number thirty?
That was still pending, Mayor.
Okay.
Number thirty.
Number thirty.
Can I ask for a regular agenda?
Yes.
Number thirty on the regular agenda, number thirty, and number thirty-seven by council member Dr. Tyler King are pending on the regular agenda. And then on the supplemental agenda, item number six. That's it. That's it.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to bring in a motion to extend the reading to the.
Eleven.
Alright, motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Item thirty?
Thirty, go ahead.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Authorizing the city manager to award contract to the lowest responsive bidder, RAVA Construction LLC of Spring, Texas, in the amount of one million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the provision of all necessary machinery, equipment, labor, supervision, and other services and uppertunities required for the Sakata Creek wastewater treatment plant improvements. The scope of work consists of new DIP header and yard piping, new tech, telescoping assembly, and other necessary appurtenances. That's a new word for me. Appertinances, okay. Funding for this project is available from the Sewer System Fund twenty twenty-two sewer revenue bond. And Dr. Alzabeth, I asked you to report a little bit about this because the Sakata Creek wastewater treatment plant keeps coming back up. And I know the last time we discussed mitigation of the smell. And so I guess I wanted to know if, one, some of these improvements are included in this particular item? And two, if that means that the shoring up of the wall that fell not too long ago, is that connected to this item?
So the shoring and this project are not related to the odor and smell? The reason, this is a very old plant. It's working around nine point five million gallons, which is supposed to be normal, but because it's old, the system is not capable keeping up with that. The fix to this is when the new wastewater in the north, I think it's called Manara's Plant, once that is up and running, a lot of that volume will go there, so the nine point five will go to a four. Once it's within the four million, that odor and taste, sorry, that odor and smell will disappear because it is within the capacity. So that answer your first question is when that one is running, that will go low in volume, then that would reduce the issue or disappear. This one plus the retention wall for the Sakata Creek are really a safety issue and a regularity issue. This one was requested by TCEQ because of some of the leakages on the pipes, so it's a pipeline project. That's going to fix that and bring us back to compliance. The retention wall, we have, we're looking at engineering solution, how we can retain that wall and not make it fall further. So we're honestly working day and night now with a couple of ideas and solutions. We should probably within a month, month and a half, be able to say, we got an engineering firm. We will go out and find some way, a technique that will stabilize that wall and prevent it from further erosion. They're separate, but the short answer is we need to keep that plant running. I think, you know, between decommissioning completely or keeping it, right now, based on the numbers, we're probably going to have to keep it because upgrading that or removing completely from that will require around two hundred million dollar worth of, yes, that's probably, at least for the next five years, we'll need that much money to get rid of this plant and move somewhere else. So for that, we'll probably improve it, keep it around four to five million gallon, get rid of those issues that you've raised, but also deal with the safety issues that, that also like the wall and some of the pipe.
And when do you think the Manada's new wastewater treatment plant will be online so that that can begin to happen?
Good question. I am not sure, but I know it's coming very soon. I was told like early September, October, unless I'm confusing with the name, but I think it's that one that's coming very soon to be operated. Because now we're moving staff to that location for preparation and commissioning.
I appreciate that.
You will. One question and a follow-up for that. Aside from those, that plant, because I think thirty days for you is enough to coordinate for the next twenty years, right? So do you, I would suspect that you're working on moving people around and doing that over the next five or six years? And I'm not asking for it today or tomorrow, but over the next several months, if we can have an idea of the overall movement of the whole Utilities Department system. I know there's a lot of action going on, underground work, water plant, sewer plant, everything that's going on, and maybe at one point, we can get a better understanding as a public presentation, so that people can understand what we're doing. That's going to affect us over the next twenty, thirty years, or at least over the next ten, twenty years. That we could just do something that's precise, but not absolute.
Counselor, this is a front and center for me, and I'm talking to the people who wrote the Water Master Plan, the Integrated West, and the people who wrote the other one, the Wastewater Master Plan.
Yes.
Thirty years, long-range planning, to understand really what are our priorities? How are we going to invest in the next five years? How is that going to impact our rate setting and all of that? So I am in that kind of sharp learning curve. A month or two probably would be, would be good to get back to you with the priorities based on those studies and so on.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, there was an incredible amount, amount of information guaranteed, and now you have to decipher it, put it all together and put it on that. I'm excited for the outcome, and I'm excited for your work and everything that you're doing right now. So, but I'm sure that over the next couple of, not a couple of months, over the next period of time, when you see fit to bring it over so that we can be, I guess, excited about this, everything that's going on over there, so that the public can know about that.
They will. Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the item.
Second.
Motion, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We got item thirty-seven?
That was number thirty. Last five.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. So basically, this is just an item to, I brought it for discussion for the sake of discussing the use of artificial intelligence in any of our communications, whether it's internal or external. in any of our communications, whether it's internal or external. As we're living in this world where nobody knows what's real, no one knows what's fake, whether it's text or images, so. And I've been, I get emails from lots of different people and things, and I start to see a similar pattern, and I'm starting to get annoyed by just reading. I understand AI is here, it's not going away, it's in the infancy stages, but I, I think it might be a good policy to look for having some form of disclaimer, because I don't think using AI is a problem, I think it's a good tool. I just think we should know when AI is being used to create, you know, communications, graphics, or, but I don't. This, I mainly brought this for discussion, but if we want to, if anyone on council agrees or has any thoughts, yeah.
Councilmember Sierra?
Yes, no, I just, I wanted to echo the comments of, of Councilmember King, and I just, I know that there's, that, well, we have seen and heard that there's quite a bit of use with AI in terms of policymaking. And so, one, it would be helpful to really know where some of that's coming from, is it really just like expertise? And because the, you know, there's, policy can look good on paper, but if we also don't know how to implement it, that's, becomes another problem that we face. And so we wanted to bring this up for a topic of discussion.
Does anybody else want to comment?
Thank you. So I, I appreciate, Dr. King, you, you bringing this forward because I think what has become apparent with AI is that when it is used to develop policy and communication, it's, it, it sounds really good, and it's very easy to slip into reliance on the model, not understanding that the model has a lot of issues that it is designed to produce content that is pleasing to the person who is requesting it and not necessarily completely factual. The facts-based, the fact-based items are secondary to meeting the goal of whatever the query was. Because if there is a, some negative connotation from the facts, and your query, your question that you want answered doesn't include for that, these models don't always present all the facts. So if we have a disclaimer, then at least the reader can understand, I need to go through it, I need to check and double-check my work because I need to make sure that the facts are being presented as they should, even if it is a little bit contradictory to the original question. So that's why I think a disclaimer is good, so that it identifies both for the person who is getting the AI document and also the one who's reading it, that you just need to be a little bit careful to double-check.
Well, I mean, I guess we make the motion just to, any communication that was generated artificially in whatever way needs to have a disclaimer, is that what you all are looking for?
That was like, that was my thought, but I did want to hear just from management and legal, like if you.
Just so we could get to like what we want to get out of this item.
Mayor, City Council, let me, let me, let me put a little bit more into it as well, too. Because as I, as I went and looked at this, I cannot find any other city's policy out there on this, it's, it's not been created yet. There are some internal ones that are doing internal contacts within each other, but they haven't taken it to the broad level. But one of the things, keep in mind as well, too, that when you spell-check your word document, that is utilizing AI as well, too. So I, I would, I would argue that you don't want to make just a broad level, use AI this way. You utilize the example of the policies and everything, I think those, those are more apropos within that structure. So when AI is utilized as a tool, it's one thing, you know, that's grammar checks, it's spell checks, it's translations, that, those are the different types of that. In my mind, that would be very acceptable within the co-authored one, where it is at least staff-checked and, and you're walking through the, the best practices and such like that. But when you utilize AI as an author, I think that's where you become a little bit more problematic within the structure. And so I, I think that if we were to develop out a policy, I would recommend just doing it in a tiered-type structure and saying, disclaimer is at this point in time, but, but not at this point in time. Because you could, to a certain level, you go out and Google search, and you're in AI no matter which way you go, and it's going to become more prevalent, I think, over time as well, too. And so I, I think that type of a tiered approach is not bad, but I agree with you that you want to be very careful about how that, how that, how that information is utilized. It's good, in my mind, I believe it helps with the research quite a bit, but then you have to, it has to be converted over to that. And so if you, if you don't take it far enough, if you just, if you look at it at the broadest level, and we, we talk about that with the budget and everything, if you look at the, just the numbers at one level, comparability is not necessarily there. Same thing with AI and the use of that AI in order to generate things. I would argue that every, every policy, every resolution, every ordinance actually takes on a, the nature of, of the group, no matter which way you go with it as well, too. But I would, I would, I would say that, yeah, if you're to provide some directive within creating one, allow, allow management to try to put one together that has those kind of thought processes within there. Because I, I would argue that you don't want to go too far one way or the other, and it's going to become more prevalent as we move. And so I'd like it to be able to be molded.
Mayor, President, it's just like, it's just like, like teachers with their students, right? Like if you're, if you're asking your directors for a report or something like, there, there needs to be that understanding that, yes, they actually know the, the topic that they're giving to you, that they actually can explain it and, and explain it to a layman and, and when they get into the real world, and just, you know, knowing that what you're, what you're getting, what y'all, what management gives us is, yeah, real work. Which, yeah.
And, and if you do, if you look at it, I mean, we, we have some ordinances that we have borrowed from other places and then just try to lay over the top of, of what Laredo needs as well, too. And so it can happen without AI, I, I guess that's what I'm stating a little bit, is that we can, we can get into those predicaments where we're just taking best practices from somebody else and then thinking that we can just lay, overlay it, but we've not taken the work with all of that. And I, there's been some recent conversations, I would argue that, that's where those ordinances actually came from when they were brought in. They have to be, they have to fit what Laredo needs at that point in time, but, and, yeah.
We need to put some pop quizzes for management in there.
So my, I guess my motion will just be to, for management to create an internal AI disclaimer policy and, you know, just let it, whenever you can, let us know and, you know, what you decide to do, just so we are knowing what we're seeing. And, and if it's co-authored by AI, there's no, I mean, that's just, that's, that's going to be a fact, that's going to be what we're living with moving forward. And that's, that's not the end of the world, it's just as long as we know what we're, who the authors are.
And I, and I, and I can appreciate that, I think it goes back to Councilmember Seguro.
Hold on, point of order, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Motion second.
Yeah, I, I can, I can agree, because I think the, the idea is that if you know where the information has come from, it'll make you look at the document in greater detail or not, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any other comments?
I just wanted to just make one, one thing clear, as, as we move into this, I know it's not clear even for the true definition of AI. I don't know if, if the, if the policy is going to have a clear, clear wording as to saying this document is, was provided with the, with the use of AI in its form. I know a lot of the emails that I've been reading have been better written now, a little bit more articulated, articulated at least, very well. Whilst I understand that, you know, it's, it's a great tool to use to push us forward, but I just want to make sure that we understand that as we move forward, the wording of that policy has to be clear and concise so that everybody can understand it.
Right, there's no substitute for knowledge, right? Okay, any other comments? Okay, call for a question, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Motion to open up, number six from the supplemental on staff reports to open up the presentations from parks, fleets, solid waste planning, animal care, and public works. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We've already extended the meeting to eleven, so.
And you have already heard the public works presentation for some stuff.
They got slipped in there, yeah, it's ready.
You gave us some.
We gave you all a copy on Thursday, we're going to go ahead and give you another.
Will I get another? Yeah, I got, I got mine here.
Zone, have a question. Does, do you all need quorum to go through these presentations?
No, no action can be taken if there's less than five.
No action will be taken.
No action is anticipated.
But you can go through the presentations one after another? Okay.
Mayor, ma'am? So I just, I just wanted to comment on the fact that, you know, we did have a, a budget workshop last week on, on Thursday and Friday, and I know that you were ready to, you were prepared to come and share this information with us. And I, you know, I, I, I cannot answer for the fact why the vote was taken to close down everything, but what I think it did was do a, a big disservice to the people who were expecting to hear these presentations last week. We had two days set aside, Thursday and Friday, for public budget workshop, and that didn't happen. And so, you know, we're, we're going to get into what the minutes say next time when, when the minutes come up about how that meeting ended. But I do want to apologize, take the opportunity to apologize not only to the directors that were ready to present to us, but also to the public for the fact that we advertised we would have public budget workshops, and in the end, we cut those off extremely early, in my opinion. So I'm very grateful that we have this opportunity for you to present and for us to hear the information. I think the, the departments that did present, they initiated great conversations and, and not necessarily to change policy, but to have a better, better understanding of where these public taxpayer dollars are. And I hope directors got a good understanding of where we on council would like to have focus for the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. So thank you for presenting today.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, thank you for having us, J.J. Gomez, Parks Director. Thank you for, again, the opportunity to present, I know there's a couple of other departments behind me. I will keep it to the, straight to the point. I want to first of all say thank you to all, I'm going to take the, take advantage, take, take advantage of the time to say thank you to all my, our employees, especially this summer that, it was a long summer for us, but all the lifeguards, all the rec center staff that came to help us. We had a, a, a great summer program. The pools are still operating, a lot, a lot, a lot, our lifeguards went back to college, so we got a couple of pools still operating till Labor Day. But I want to take advantage and thank all our staff for, for putting, getting this through this summer. Every summer, every summer is, is a challenge because of all the people that use our facilities, but we were able to get through, and now the kids are back in school. But we are, I want to thank everybody that came to work for us, for, and hopefully we can see them next year. So let's start with the organizational chart. As you see here, we, we are, we are divided into, one's the operations, one's the administration, recreation side. Mr. Tommy Ramirez on the left side does the maintenance, athletics, construction, horticulture. Ms. Anita Stanley on the administration side, does the administration, rec centers, aquatics, park planner, park development, and special needs. Under me, I have the special events division now. Also under, under my direction will be the Max Mandel, the Max Mandel Operating Fund, the Buena Vista, the Parkland Acquisition Fund, and the Recreation Fund. So this is how we, I would split up right now, how we, we now with the addition of, got willing in, in the fall with Buena Vista. We are 249.46 strong, full-time employees. And you see the point forty-six because a lot of our employees, not a lot, but our season, our service staff is seasonal or part-time. To give you an example about part-timers takes about half, it's almost equal to a little bit less than half of a full-time employee. So we're 249.46 full-time employees in, in our department. Administration-wise, we have ten. Park maintenance, we have eighty-five full-time employees. Construction, which is our, we help with all the small projects that we have, is eighteen of them. Horticulture and forestry, we have five full-time employees. Our rec center, which is your summers, including the summer programs as well, is 82.18. Aquatics, your full-time, part-time, and seasonal lifeguards are 41.2. And our new division that we opened, Special Events, have eight full-time employees. Vacancies, as you can see that we have four in parks, which are groundskeepers, three in special events, two in construction, eight in recreation in the rec centers, and these are part-time rec specialists, and five aquatics. And we're just losing more as we speak because, I guess, like I said, they're all going back, they're all going back to school now, back to college and high school. Some accomplishments, which we're very proud of. Constructed restrooms at BP Newman Park, which is in Leven. Installed mommy-and-me swings throughout the city, something new that we did last year. Installed portable dressing rooms at Freddy Benavides Rodaro Fancy with adjacent batting cages, which is a baseball field adjacent to Ciarroa High School. Replaced four playgrounds throughout the city and eight chain structures around the city. Renovated concession stand and restrooms at Maria Elida Benavides softball complex, it's in, in, in South Laredo. Upgraded the fitness center at Ciarroa Rec Center, if you go in there, it's really nicely updated with new, with new equipment. Installed fencing at Dryden and Jovita Idal soccer fields. We renovated the therapeutic fitness center at Haynes, that's the one that we converted over to for the all-needs, special-needs people that can use it. We landscaped the Clark Boulevard median. Installed archways at the Alberta Choa Baseball Field, which is adjacent to the Safadini Park. We're remodeling and still working on the inner-city pool facility, which a lot of people use for our aquatics. The development of Vietnam Veteran Plaza. Created a multipurpose field at Divine Mercy, which is always being used frequently throughout the year. Constructed a metal basketball shade for Father Magnable. Built a skate park and restrooms at Father Magnable. Built walking trails, soccer fields, amenities, and upgraded basketball courts at Los Martinez. Constructed a real beautiful basketball shade at the Sneca Park. We're currently adding, well, we added lighting to Canizoles Park and currently working on St. Peter's Light, St. Peter's Plaza lighting. Installed exercise equipment and bird deterrence at Lafayette Park. Constructed a batting cage at Slaughter Park. Something that was, was done this past year and has been very important to our department, to the whole city, was we amended the park, that parkland dedication ordinance, which came into effect on, on June the twentieth. That had not been updated since 2008, which is the new, the parkland dedication, and now we're going to be getting more money for our parks, which is very, was very important in a long, in a long time coming. Amended the ordinance to increase rental fees for fields, which went into effect in January of 2025. And I know a lot of council members have said we were going to raise some fees to, 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 to be able to use our fields. We brought some regional estate tournaments to the city. And last but not least, and I will show, we implemented, like I said earlier, this, this evening, a very special needs, a special needs division in the department that, currently with Jenny Sanchez. And at the end of, at the end of the presentation, I'll show you a two-minute clip of, of, of that division.
Mayor, ma'am? I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Gomez, but I see here you, you've listed the code of ordinances to increase rental fields on the rental fees for the fields
Yes, ma'am.
that went into effect in January. And I was wondering, because we have been talking about that, and then we just implemented or just approved the fee structure for the Buena Vista Sports Complex, what has been the response from the public? What have you seen, not necessarily to Buena Vista, but for this other, other policy that went into effect? It's been, what, six, seven, seven, eight months, right?
A little bit more than half here, yes, ma'am. To be honest with you, Councilmember, we have, it's business as usual. We, we, we have, we have continued with, they understand that our, we have to fix the field, we use more, we use more equipment to get the fields ready. We didn't go drastically that high, we went up maybe, I think, like 20%, a little bit more than we were charging. And to this day, and Mr. Ramirez can attest to that, I think we pretty much have, we have, we have not stopped at all. As a matter of fact, I think we even got more, more, more participation to, to the tournament leagues and all that, so, so it's good. It's, we, we've got a good response. It's, we, we've got a good response on it, ma'am. And thanks, thank, thank you for all the support on that because I think it's always, it was also a long time coming as well. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our standard operating procedures, as you can see our table of contents, our purpose, our mission statement, our, our general policies. We're working on it, we are continuously working on it. In January, we will be implementing all our SOPs through Mr. Nev's direction and Mr., Mr. Landin, that will be, we sat down with them and going over. We are continuing, growing, continuous growing department, and we always looking to improve. So this is our table of contents that we use, and what we do in our outline and our, and our, and our, when we, when we started. We're already implementing some SOPs, but it will be finalized now also with the Buena Vista one, starting in January twenty twenty-six, Galvili. Upcoming projects, these are the projects that you saw in CIP. The, I mean, I'm, I'll go to the Max Mandel building, raised building and concession stand renovations, which I'm gonna say something proud. Thanks to management and you all, we are currently ranked number nine in the state as the nine best municipal course in the state of Texas. We spend a good money in there. We've got a new management company there. They're doing a tremendous job. We are getting it better. We, last month, we got ranked number nine out of the whole state of Texas of, in municipal court, in municipal golf courses. So that is a big, hopefully we want to get up to the top five, like I said earlier. So hopefully we want to get that. Conserco House renovation, a feasible study for an indoor recreational feasibility, feasibility study for a possible rec center. Aquatic shade structures and canopy for pools and paths, et cetera, as we want to add more pools and paths. We talked about the possibility, if allowed, soccer field, artificial turf. A citywide playground and shade replacement program that we are identifying with our park planner. And let me, let me throw something in there and I'm, I'm gonna, I want to congratulate Tommy. As direction from Mr. Nev, he wanted somebody, we wanted somebody in our department to be certified playground inspectors. So, uh, three of us from our department and also some people from RISC took the class, very intense class. He, he felt like Ronnie Dinkley had to go back to school and, 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 and he is now certified now as a playground inspector so that any time that we put a playground, we don't have to reach out to anywhere else. He's gonna, he's the one that's currently certified. The other two people in our department are working on the certification. But I want to congratulate him for, for, for being able to, to get him certified on that. Will we also Barbara Fasken Recreational Center Swimming Pool, a pedestrian bridge for Fasken, the Santa Fe Park and Walking Trail, sports field lighting, which we, very it's already time and coming, we're still using the old halogen lights, the old, we want to convert them to LEDs, less cost, more cost-effective, environmentally as well helps us. The Solar Center roadway improvement and our Boulevard of the Americas, which I know that would, that's under us, but I know that will be discussed further on with you all.
Mayor, ma'am. The, I have a, a couple of things on, and to go back a little bit to the standard operating procedures. I, I know that, I believe in last year's budget, there were FTEs that were going to be assigned to riverfront management of, of the vegetation there. But I don't see any standard operating procedures for, for that staff.
So we are, the, the councilwoman, we hired in October, we opened up the positions, ten of them. We started bringing them on board, okay? They are currently, we have six crews that work along the river, along the riverbanks, okay? They are currently being trained with the guys that are working there right now, with the ones from Father Magnable all the way down to Las Palmas, all the way down to, uh, Parque España. So those ten are, we just, nine, because we got one open for those ten. Those ten are spending time right now, working with our guys to getting trained. We are now developing a crew, two crews, so that little, that can already be gone on their own, to be able to cover the whole riverland, uh, uh, the river, the riverland area that we, that we cover. And we are working also with community development because there is some land along the river that we still have to identify if it belongs to the city or not. So we don't want to go in there and start cutting, hey, that's not ours here. So we are working with that because I think it's close to, close to about thirteen, fourteen miles of, of, from all the way down from that, so we are working with that. So those gentlemen that you're talking about are currently being trained with this other six crews, and those will be true leader, and they're gonna be their own, they're gonna be their own, uh, their own crews.
So may I suggest that you take advantage right now of the work that's being done at the Las Palmas Nature Trail?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that, that's, that, that is happening because of money provided from Congressman Goya. An earmark to not only beautify the area, but to solve for invasive species, remove invases, replace it with native species. And that's going to preserve water in the river, which is important for our sustainability. But they have people trained to identify native species and invasive species. And then they're also using approved processes to remove the invasive vegetation to make sure it doesn't come back.
Right.
So just a suggestion, because there would be some training opportunities made available.
And I would get the supervisor that will be overseeing them as well to be able to get trained with that. Yes, you're right. And I know we're going into Sacate Creek as well, that they're cleaning up that area into the, so they're, they're, they're the ones that are working on, we have a, a crew that does, the crew that does tres lados park also knows Las Palmas, so two, so those guys are working with them, so they can kind of get used to it.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so, so that's what, that's what, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll definitely follow up with that.
I appreciate that. And, and then on your project, the Solar Center roadway improvement, I know that there was a development that was intending to develop a, by the, by Highway eighty-three? And not necessarily travel all the way down to the Solar Center. But is the road improvement limited to the section of road beyond the development? Is the developer, I guess the, the question is, is the developer responsible for the road that gets into the development? And then the city's picking up the road that goes from where the development ends down to the Solar Center by the river?
Mayor, if I may, so the, as part of the CIP, we did allocate two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to, for a current developer that's going to extend the roadway from Highway eighty-three all the way to the end of his development.
So we're paying, we're paying the developer for the road?
There's an agreement in place that we have reviewed, and that's what we're looking into at this point.
Is, is there a reason why we chose to pursue that? Just because usually we ask the developers to pay for those roads?
Right. So there was something that was presented to us that we recommended to proceed, and that's why we include it as part of the improvement.
Mayor, I, Mayor and council member, I can share a little bit more as well, too. We required the developer to show us the assessed value of the growth. And so, like a lot of other deals that we have done, if he was able to provide us with the increase of the assessed value of the development, we were able to determine how to assist within that, within the, 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 the improvement of that road that, that runs back there. So it is based upon the economic value that that development is bringing in, just like we've done with the chapter three eighties and all those different things. There is a justification analysis that we did based upon the new homes in the area, based upon the agreements that we had in place, and based upon where we were trying to head. So that, that's how we actually ended up doing it this way. We, we've done it with a lot of different developments, housing developments. This one just because of the, the initial deal to where it came, it was a shift in how that deal was handled.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
On those river crews, I know it's very different cutting grass at Independence Hills Park, or at any other park market to the, to the riverbanks. Has RISC identified any protections such as snake boots and such, things like that?
Risk, the risk department, our risk, the city, we, we frequently work with them, councilmen. We, they have their steel toe boots, they have their special chaps that we have to, we have to work with them and.
The face cards.
The face cards and all that because it, it's, the dough is different than cutting a baseball field. So, so it's, it's, it's own, it's a, it's its own different, different animal, right? So they are, we are, and we're making sure we buy an equipment and all that to have it for those ten guys. Even though we're trying to, if needed, we, we'll send some more extra guys, but those ten are getting trained by the people that already done it before because these guys are brand new.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm sorry. Upcoming projects, this is that we have within our department. La Diera soccer fields and ADA playscape. We're building right now in, in La Diera ADA, beautiful, two, two big ADA playscapes. The soccer field, we're making some improvement. Two Tanks Park, I call it Two Tanks, that's the park right behind, right near Mary Hill. There's, there's soccer fields there, right, right along Mike Doyle Trail. We're gonna, we're gonna be putting some improvements, there are some amenities. Vietnam Veteran Memorial, which is the North Central Park Phase Two ADA, that's already working, hopefully should be done end of December. Galway, we have our meeting on Thursday, so hopefully we can have that Phase Two open up. Divine Mercy Pickleball Courts and Parking Lot, that's coming up really soon, that a lot of people are really anticipating. Father Magnable Park Pickleball Courts, the George Papas Market Tennis Courts, the tennis floor reconstruction project, that's, that's been ongoing on for a while, those, those tennis courts have been there for a while and need some resurfacing. Lomas de Zul Park Trail, which is just south of Las Misiones, which we, we're familiar with. Vista Nueva Dog Park. At Independence Park, we're looking into building a frisbee golf. We only have one frisbee golf course at North Central Park, and we will be building one, Galvili, at Independence, as Councilmember Gonzalez, we, we talked about. Shallow Hacking Bike closure improvements, as the people that we went out to hire to get that going. Of course, the Buena Vista Sports Complex opening in the fall. And complete inner-city shade replacement, which will, which that will be, is a big one because we do have a lot of elderly that uses that, that, that pool for, for exercising and, and activities. Our proposed revenues, this is what we're looking at, so you can have an idea, about five hundred, close to half a million, half a million dollars. Swimming pool fees, we get about seventy thousand dollars a year. Rec center membership fees is three hundred and eighteen thousand. Summer programs, which is kids from six to sixteen, about fifty-eight thousand. Rentals, which is from pavilions to different, to different amenities that we have is about sixty-two five. Special event fees is about thirty-two thousand. So that right there is equals about, we average about five hundred and forty thousand a year in revenues, just in the, in the department. Proposed expenses, we have about twenty-one point nine million dollars of, of, in our budget. As you can see, their personnel, which is about sixty-four percent, goes on personnel, fourteen point two. Contraction services is about, which is twenty-seven percent, five point nine. Materials and supplies, which is about point seven percent, one point six. Other charges, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, and debt services, for example, your copier machines and all that is about eight thousand two seventy-nine. So our, our budget for this coming year will be about twenty-one point nine million dollars. How much it went up from last year, we were told to stay within three point four, five, three point five, and we stayed at three point three. So really proud that we were able to stay with that. What changed on us, we, we, it was six hundred and ninety-two thousand, but what changed on us was the core personnel. Our personnel went up about four point six percent. What's really gotten us is the chemicals for the pools. The chemicals for the pools have really gotten up for two, for, well, because if you all know, but there's two reasons. Number one, we are now opening up more earlier now. We, we're opening now, we're trying to open beginning of May, and we're going all the way up to about Labor Day weekend. Now, right now, the last, ever since school started, we're only, we're only down to three pools that we're opening. And we're opening a little bit longer. Instead of opening from two to seven, now we're opening up from one to eight because it gets a little cooler at eight o'clock in the evening for the pools. So it won't be as hot because one to seven was right in the middle of the heat. So, and the people, we got a lot, got a lot of good feedback on that as far as opening until eight o'clock. So we, we've been extending our hours a little bit. Okay? And then last, I'm gonna show you this quick video. I'm gonna finish it up with this, with our, our, our new division, our special needs division. Again, I want to thank Jenny Sanchez for grabbing the bull by the horn and, and, and getting this thing started. When you go to the rec centers and you see all these kids have fun, you see your parents and you hear this testimonies that say, Coach, it was, or Mr. Gomez or Jenny, this is what we needed. We never wanted to bring our kids over because, you know, they're three kids and then, and that's what it's all about. I mean, it's, it's, it's very satisfying. Again, it was part of, it was part of something that I said we were gonna do, and thanks to management and you all that we were able to start to do this. So let me go to get started with the. Appreciate it. It's gonna get better for us, and we're really proud. We actually, Mr. Reese, Jonathan, that's his first name?
Jonathan Reese, yes.
Jonathan Reese, one of our part-time employees in a wheelchair. And when you saw him shoot with the basketball, he was one of our part-time employees. He's got his degree in kinesiology. So he, he knows, you know, he wants to bring all these leagues, basketball, Friday they have open gym, you know, up every Friday at Haynes to bring all these people. We want to buy some, what do you, Jenny, what do you call those, wheelchair basketball for, for wheelchairs? So, so we want to have, we're gonna start a basketball league for wheelchairs, Galvili. So really excited about it, man. Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Mayor, ma'am. Ms. Sanchez, will there be, will you be releasing a schedule of programming during the year for this community?
Yes, actually, we are, now that I have an, an employee with me, we are working on some additional programming. Right now, I'm situated at Haynes, it's sort of like the center point, but I am working on, we have a, a class that it's gonna happen at Fasken, and we're working on, just with all of our rec centers with, just expanding our programming. But it's not just for children, we're looking at programming for kid, adult persons, sorry, eighteen and over, the people, the adults who are in either day habs or, you know, need some physical activity, we're gonna be providing programming during the day with them. We're working with our stroke support group, we're also working with our Parkinson's group. So we have a lot going on and we will be pushing out a big calendar as soon as we can. Thank you.
Mayor, just one last question. I think it'll be, and I don't know if we're doing this already, but just for the sake of, for data, I don't know if we can accumulate over time, the number of children under the age of eighteen, under the age of ten or whatever, adults, handicapped, special needs, all that kind of stuff. Did we get any resources from the school districts as far as, there was no lunch given, lunch or breakfast that any other places other than the boys' club?
Right, we had the lunches during the camp, during the summer camp. We had an adaptive summer camp. We had four different camps, in which we serviced about fifty different kids in that camp, and we did have.
That'll work, that'll work for other things later on, but I think keeping that stat alive is, is good. And, and breaking it down into demographics, it might, it might serve useful later on, you know, as we get maybe the following year and figuring out what we need, especially as we look at the square footage for indoor sports that we, we talked about.
Yes. In addition, we've spoken to both districts and I've gotten quite a bit of volunteers. You know, it's important that we teach our own kids how to be mindful, um, community members. So we've had our own, uh, different coaches from different districts in sports volunteer their time and, and talents to help our, you know, grow our, our different programming.
Great. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, Ron Miller, Fleet Management Director, here to present to you our 2026 budget. It's not as exciting as everybody else's stuff, but we just try to keep everything rolling for y'all. To start off, you know, we have an organizational chart, which we have our operations people. I have two superintendents who handle the two different shops that we have, maintaining all the fleet. Our solid waste shop is basically our diesel side, all our specialized equipment in our landfill. And at the main shop, our superintendent will maintain between our gas mechanics, our diesel mechanics, and warehousing, which we have for our parts, we call it the warehouse, but it's our parts department. So they basically maintain and keep everything going for all of us. And I thank them for getting us through all this because sometimes it's very difficult with the different changes in equipment that we handle. Our FETs, we have fifty-six people. We have zero vacancies. We are now facing retirement, I'm gonna be losing, this week, last week I lost my top mechanic from a diesel side from the landfill. We'll be working on getting that field. I'll be losing two gas mechanics by the end of the year, retirement. I just lost one to ICE today, will be leaving and going to the Border Patrol. So we'll be doing what we can to get all our staff back up, you know, we work hard to find people and we'll find the right people we need. Our accomplishments for fleet, we auctioned off one hundred and eighty-two pieces of equipment that were obsolete, which the monies we got went back to the city to be able to continue forward, doing what we can. We repair all equipment the best way we can to keep them rolling. We received over a hundred and seventy new pieces of equipment from police cars to back to garbage trucks to regular facility vehicles. So we manage that, get them licensed and get them all through the system so that we can utilize them. We installed another, which is gonna be our second twenty-one thousand pound lift to raise up our heavier trucks so that our mechanics do not have to be working underneath with rollers to make their jobs a little safer. We have completed a temporary waste, at solid waste, a shop roof to protect the employees from the heat and the rain that we have out there because we don't have much of a shop out there. But we're doing everything we can to make their lives a lot safer. Okay, at the same time, we have installed cameras to help ourselves to keep tabs of all of our employees, our equipment that is there. We also now installed a electrical connection so we can have our cameras at our compound, which is our equipment that we, we receive as deleted, so we store them there to maintain them there. The standard operations, like everything that's being saying, in January twenty twenty-six, we'll be implementing all the, everything in to go through. At the same time, we'll be making changes because fleet's always making changes with different equipment and procedures that we do. Our goals for this coming year is to complete a heavy equipment repair roof over the annex diesel shop. We have a small shop, so what we're working on is having a cover, maybe not have concrete, but have enough cover to protect them from the environment so we can get more equipment in there and get it protecting our employees. We're hoping that the construction of the solid waste maintenance shop will get going, we're not sure, but we would hope that we get there. We'll proceed to repair all the equipment that we have out there.
Mayor, may I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Miller, why, why is there not a timeline for the solid waste maintenance?
It went out, it went out for bid and I believe there was not enough funds to cover the cost of it right now. That would be solid waste handling that.
So I'm, can I direct that to Mr. Chavez? What is the plan to?
So right now, we're currently evaluating that with the consultant to see what our best option is, coming back and see if we can look at any types of alternatives there, and we'll discuss that with the staff and the consultant.
Okay, thank you, and in the meantime, where is the inventory being held?
We have containers that we set up when we first got set up that you requested that we do. We have all that under control, we have two additional containers. We also installed a different container for our supervisors and the superintendent to be in, separated from our parts guys that are handling the inventory. So we, I mean, everything is secure and everything's in order that was requested. We keep a man, we keep an inventory and it's all controlled out there. Also, we have fifteen, what we see as our corporate trucks that are older, that are causing us probably a lot of cost, our fifteen Scorpion body side loaders, we'll be getting, hopefully by the end of this fiscal, no, by the end of this year, to get them out of the system completely and hopefully six of the GSP bodies, which are also costing us, with sixteen new McNeilus trucks, which we already have six already in operation. And I just got word from the McNeilus that we'll be receiving three of the trucks this, the end of this month and the rest of them by the end of December. So that will save us automatically getting rid of those Scorpion trucks. I can tell you right now that we spent about one point two million a year to keep those seventeen trucks rolling. They're older trucks, they're expensive. So I figure, looking at it, we should save at least from eight hundred to a million dollars next year on those trucks with those ten new trucks, those sixteen new trucks coming in, that'll alleviate that. And then we'll look into the future of getting rid of the other GSP body trucks that we have at solid waste, which is a high cost.
What's the life expectancy on those, ten years, ten, twelve years?
We usually run between seven to eight, these trucks are running about ten because of what happened with the pandemic. We run behind and the trucks, we couldn't get trucks fast enough to get.
And yeah, so, and I was, I was reading up last year or this past year that eighteen months, what's the wait time right now?
Well, that was then, but I was able to work with McNeilus, which is the original truck that body that we utilized years before that had gone away from it, from the, that they wanted to try other bodies. I requested that we go back to McNeilus and I was able to get the first six trucks in six months. And the, the ten trucks that we just finished this fiscal year, we should have them, like I said, within eight, eight to nine months, we're getting them. They're working with us and they're getting those trucks. And like I say, these are the trucks that I have a lot of, I have a lot of power myself that it's gonna work for us because I've seen those trucks operate and I see.
Yeah, in the meantime, there's a lot of wear and tear on the trucks that are existing because they're working overtime and people should, people should understand that.
We run our trucks hard. So besides the bodies getting damaged or worn out, the trucks chassis are getting worn out. So that adds on to the cost besides just the bodies. So we're hoping that that will help us reduce a bunch of costs. At the same time, we receive all those new pickups from all the departments, it's gonna bring down a lot of costs too this coming year, we hope to see.
Hydraulic issues on these?
Most, all those trucks is hydraulics. We have, besides that, we have the system in the trucks, which is the DEF system, the diesel system, that, you know, they get worn out and they get very costly, so we start losing transmissions. So we have to make decisions, especially on the Allison transmission, it's very expensive to repair, but we need to get them back up. You know, the DEF system costs about, every time they go down, they plug up, it's about eighteen thousand dollars. But I gotta keep the trucks going because if not, your constituents are gonna be complaining they're not getting trash picked up. And I guarantee you, they're gonna come to me.
Yeah, no, appreciate the effort because they, you keep, you keep them rolling and people don't understand exactly what you go through, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, because it's, it's, these are all specialized equipment. And I'm emphasizing mostly on that because I can guarantee you that solid waste knows me real well. Because we bill monthly and I get complaints all the time, but we do everything we can to keep them up and going. So, you know, besides that, they have the equipment on the landfill, all those cat equipment. When a dozer goes down, we're talking, it's not a five, six thousand, it's from a twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollar repair. You're talking about million dollar pieces of equipment.
I don't know if you have, this is part of your report, but do you have, can you, can you just mention real quick the number of outside contractors or mechanics that you're using?
Okay, right now, I utilize my personnel and I've got at least a hundred contracts that I work with around with different, with, between parts and service companies to help me out. At the same time, they face the same problems as we do, where we don't have the ability to find enough diesel mechanics or other mechanics. And so we work tediously to get, get the most important equipment out that's gonna create the biggest boohoo.
Yeah.
Okay, so our garbage trucks, we gotta move on them. They're expensive to repair, they're not, and it takes sometimes a little more time. The heavy equipment up on the, on the landfill, those babies sometimes will be down for months because of the specialized equipment and get the parts in. We've had compactors down for six months waiting on parts, but we do everything we can, that's why we're getting equipment that we can depend on. And that's why I've been working with, with them to try to get back to the McNeilus trucks, which now we're seeing coming in. We'll have sixteen and I'm hoping we can get another for this coming year with our budget. So we can start removing some of the trucks that are costing us a lot of money.
Excellent job.
So at the same time, with the non-heavy trucks and that, we've got a bunch of new equipment, which we got rid of a lot of a hundred and eighty-two units, which will also reduce down our costs. I'm hoping to see a million, maybe it'd be more. I know we'll make a million because just with the garbage trucks is gonna be a big difference for us. Unless we have something, a big piece of equipment go down, because I've got a couple of pieces of equipment right down, we're running about two hundred thousand up on the landfill, but that's part of our job every day out there. So at the same time, we're gonna be working with the deletion of, with all the deleted units that we'll have this year because we've already got quite a few and we're going online. We're trying out the online auction, so it's working out, we had our first one, it went well. So we're looking forward to, to going forward with that and try to put the equipment out faster. We are, this year we will be upgrading our ITA system, which is our maintenance program system that gives us all our information and all our intel that we need to know what each piece of equipment is doing. And that's where I've said I want to reduce five percent, that'd be close to a million bucks, hopefully it's more. Our proposed revenue runs down to two items really. Ninety-nine percent of my budget, of the revenue that comes in is gonna be on garage repairs and then fuel. That's ninety-nine percent of the twenty-three million. So the rest of it's really minute stuff. I mean, a hundred fifty thousand dollars come back for the wrecks that the wrist recovers on the damage, on the damage that we have. First time that we see some earnings, twenty-three thousand seven hundred, because usually we're in the hole, but this year we're, it looked like we're going the right direction.
Mayor, may I? So when you're talking garage repairs, you're talking about trucks outside of?
That's the whole system.
In different departments?
Basically all the departments. Because I've got, basically I have two facilities. One is the main facility, which maintains all the departments, even solid waste. But the second facility only handles landfill and solid waste. Just that one there, because, you know, it's all high sophisticated equipment. It's only two hundred pieces of equipment, but that two hundred pieces of equipment are worth more than twenty-eight hundred that we take care of the main shop. So, you know, all that is the money that it takes to, that we need to have to keep the fleet going. So, you know, like I said, it's ninety-nine percent of the, just those two items. The fuel, you know, we've seen some changes on it. This is our expenditures, you can notice that our fuel is at five point nine mil. You know, we're hoping to see it reduce, you know, more, we saw some reductions this year. Our heavy equipment, which is the truck, one I'm talking about, the heavy equipment that's highly costly, four point six million. That's what it takes to maintain all the back holes, the dump trucks, all the equipment that is diesel specialized and that, you know, is high cost to repair and to get the parts. Our personnel is running at seventeen percent, about four point two million. So, you know, if you look at our parts, we're on about one point six million. Our oils and that, it's kind of our cheaper stuff, it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but that's what it keeps to get the oils lubricating all of our equipment going. So there's many things that are on our gas side, two point two million, that we sent out to repair equipment because our PD units, at times we run them out because we have so many coming in. We give them priority, but we'll do everything in our power to get them back up and going. So that's kind of where we're at with that on our expenditures. And then our major fund changes, our garage repairs, we went up six point nine, almost seven percent, which we expect because of the equipment that we utilize. I have no control that I can go away from that because the equipment, the parts, everything that it takes to keep everything going. And I have to times make judgments to spend a little more so I can get that equipment up and going. So, you know, not that we'd like to, we'd like to be conservative, but a lot of times we have to do what we gotta do. And I always tell my guys, we don't want it down, especially with police units, we don't want heavy equipment, garbage trucks, we're gonna roll them. Okay, and then interest earning, like I said, I asked budget about it because I've never seen that. You know, we've done well by going into the monthly charging, so now we're, we're more up to date on our charges so we know what we're charging. Because before we did this, the last two years before, we didn't have that. Now we did, we bill every department monthly, so they know how much they're getting billed for. So that helps us to maintain our budget. And the fuel charges have gone, gone down three percent. So basically, we come out to about seven point oh four. I wish we could be lower, you know, on, on what goes on between the two fiscal years, but this is what it takes me to keep our fleet going, which is your fleet for your, our constituents. So you can see in parts, we went up ten percent, we have no control over that. Okay, our heavy equipment is another one, nine point two percent, we can't control. Personnel, we went up four point eight, but that's where, you know, the things that come around that we've done more for our employees, like last year's budgets. A restrictive reserve, usually we have that to get us through, it's being dropped down to twenty-four percent, so we brought it down. And then fuel, we brought it down thirty percent. So that's kind of where, you know, where we're at and what it takes us to make your equipment roll. And that's what I have, you have any questions for me? I'm welcome to take any more questions.
Just appreciate your effort, I haven't had a chance to go visit over there, but been wanting to. As you just painted a very clear picture of where you stand. Wow, one last question is, do you, are you, with this equipment, are you required to have your mechanic certified for this particular type of equipment?
I cannot, because I can't afford to get a certified mechanic.
So but they're, but they're trained into fixing this.
We're trained, we train our personnel to repair our equipment. If it goes into anything that requires next level, we farm it out to the, to the dealers that can handle that. I wish I could have all the certified mechanics I could, can't afford them.
Appreciate your help, man.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This is our environmental solid waste flow chart. On our left-hand side, we have our enterprise account, which is our solid waste side. As you can see, we have our administration, our sanitation division and our landfill division, which is a total of a hundred and sixty-nine FTEs. On our right-hand side, we have our special revenue account, which is the environmental. We have our, we cover some engineering, three positions, and then we cover the creek cleaning, which is under public works. And then we have our stormwater division, our hazardous materials and a cumulative beautiful. And that's a total of fifty-six FTEs. On our solid waste side, we have a total of a hundred and eighty-nine positions. Right now, we have twenty vacancies. Out of those twenty vacancies, our turnaround is mainly our refuse trucks collectors due to the environment. Our accomplishments, as the landfill cell construction was completed, continued with the two free bulky items pickup per year events. Collection this year, which it was in May, it was over six million eight hundred pounds. The additional, also the additional day of garbage collection route was accomplished, which was added on Wednesdays. The landfill was also inspected on May eighth and we continue with TCQ compliances. Also, we continue with the aggressive program of purchasing new equipment to replace our old units per year, as Mr. Miller just explained. old units per year, as Mr. Miller just explained for our fleet, and continually supporting community events. Our environmental and solid waste standard procedures, we have all these sections, which includes mainly our introduction purposes called responsibility and service provider, section one. Section two is our department rules and operations and personal responsibilities. Section three is our policy and vehicle maintenance, and section four, our landfill, and section five, special waste management. Our solid waste goals, we continue with solid waste free replacement program. Also, we're planning our citizen conventional station drop-off. Our compost, compost facility and equipment, expansion impairment modification on our current landfill. Our AP Eastman regulation and cell design will start in November, this year, right? So we can add eight more years to our, our current landfill. Our proposed rate study to evaluate solid waste collection and services and associated fees, we're planning to start working on that, on this, this coming, this year. Our liquid waste crush pad also convert methane gas to energy, continue with the-
Do you have a collection system to collect the methane?
Go ahead, because he's been working on it.
Good evening, Mayor, Alejandro Neres, assistant director of the solid waste department. Right now, we do have a, a system in place, it, we collect the gas. We just upgraded our system, so basically we have like 89 wells that extract the gas, and right now we're burning it. So that's why we want to go into the converting it into energy.
All right, right now it's being burned?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And, and when you convert it to energy, that means you're going to collect it and use it for?
We can either clean it and clean for, for, for clean gas, or we can convert it into energy, actually use it either for our facility or tie it up to the grid. It's different, there's different options that, that are being considered.
All right, and how long in the future is that planned to convert into that, that type of energy?
We would like to do it as soon as possible, you know, hopefully, you know, next year, start, I know, get some touch with some, some of the organizations that do that.
Are you, are you working on a plan for that?
I know they already gave us a, a plan already, so we just need to go and look into it, make sure it's good with management, make sure that it's approved and everything.
And how many wells did you say, or how many-
Right now, there's 89 wells that are in the, in the cells that we have, they're all around the, the cells and everything's being, it gets, uh, it gets, basically, we have a compressor that makes it, all the gas brings it, it brings it all the way to, to where they are, where it's supposed to be burned at. So it's an incineration gas project.
All right, thank you, proceed.
Mayor, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Um, do you have a way to collect it if you're compressing it? To, to store it for this use that you want to do?
No, we actually have to burn it at the moment.
Yeah, right now we have to burn it.
Yes.
There's no collection available.
No, 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 once we go into the, into the methane program, into energy, that's, that's where it's going to be done.
Yeah, we need to use it sometimes. So for that, we also, I know that the city went back on a study, so there's a study, but we need to bring it up too today.
And then the compost facility, is this a new facility?
That's the one on Ponderosa.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll continue with public awareness outreach and education campaigns, also proactively work with policies and code enforcement, work with police and code enforcement in areas of concern. And we continue promoting free cell call options for bulky items and tires to our Our bulky item recommendations to our management is to imply consent for pickup, and disintents for pickup, and we, and we'll remove bulky and brush items, review notice of our case-by-case code enforcement process too. Also, planning to work on weak zone-based sweeps, proactively remove debris to help stabilize neighborhoods' cleanliness. From there, we go for call, call-in for oversized and/or off psycho pickups, option for residence, residence calls and requests for extra-large or auto-psycho pickups. A fee, a fixed, a fee fixed, um, per item charge will apply. Also, we continue with the affidavit, affidavit option, residents or properly owners who apply for both. And we continue, you know, um, with the rate update with charge cost burden, increase in service frequency and supported by rate adjustments. Our solid waste budget revenue is a total of 41.2, mainly comes from charges for services and the rest from the interest and others. Our solid waste budget expenditure is 50.7 million, and the difference here is from our capital outlay, which is our, where we withdraw from our, our, um, I'm sorry, solid waste fund to buy our equipment and continue the replacement of our equipment, so it's a withdrawal. It's a, it's a drawdown to our, um, our solid waste.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the capital outlay, if, if you're drawing down that is, will that be a recurring charge, or this is a one-time capital investment?
Well, actually, we have the funding, so instead of borrowing money, we do the, the drawdown to our solid waste fund, but we need to continue with the replacement program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And our revenues, as you can see, we have, we have 7.2 in total. So on the main one of the garbage collection is based on our fees, our fees increase and our, and our landfill collections too. So that's where you see the increase. On the expenditure side, we, you're going to see our administrative's capital outlay increase, which is the drawdown to our fund, and administrative fee increase, 130%, or in, um, entire governmental transfer decrease is because we paid off some bonds, and then our vehicle maintenance increase, but that's due to our fleet. Now we go to our environmental side, where we have 57 positions, out of those, we just have one vacancy. Our environmental revenue is 6.7, and our main account will be from our charges for services, and then from there, our hazardous material permits. Our, our environmental expenditures, 7.5, and our main expense in here is our contractual services and our personnel.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so what, how is, how is the difference between the revenues and the expenditures made up?
Okay, uh, here, you need to remember that we cover public works, 32, 32 FTEs, and that's why you see our expenditures higher than our revenues.
So is, is that a deficit for you?
It is a deficit, because we cover the 32 positions for creek cleaning and public works, besides the three that we have in engineering, you know, so that's where it's coming from.
And is, is there, is there a plan, Mr. Neff, or how does this, how does this continue for the following year?
Well, right now, where we are working with management is looking into our revenues. We need to, um, actually doing a, trying to do a transition to have a better system and so on, our environmental and solid waste, and going more digital, so if we can update our, our fees and collect, you know, accurately. That's the only solution that we have now, looking to, you know, our collection of fees concentrated, because a lot of things still are manually still, so we'll try to do everything in a transition to a better program.
And then the rest of this is made up from general fund?
No, this is the special revenue account. This is what we collect from the stormwater fees that you get in your bill, and also we have our permit for hazardous material, where we collect from the permits. For all the warehouses that carry hazardous materials, so we collect from those, that's why it's the special revenues. That's where our collection comes from. Any other questions?
No, not anymore.
Okay, our revenues, as you can see, is a stormwater fee from the commercial, and then the stormwater fees from our residential, and then our interest earning and our solid waste management. That's where revenue comes from. And our expenditures, as you can see, is administrative charge, personnel, vehicle maintenance, motor fuel, and the debt service fund and the customer service. Environmental and KOB grants, the main, we're continually looking for grants on both sides, on environmental and KOB. So as you can see, we still have several that are active, the Laredo Arctic tree planting is coming up next month, no, actually in October. And then we have the LEDs tree light and solid trash can compacters grant, that one is also active, and that was also, we applied for it, we are about to complete it, we are, you know, receiving everything, it's already in, it's, it's already in process. And the river venture projects, we finally cut the letter that we needed, so we'll start our meeting, we're trying to keep it on this month, you know, to start the pre-meeting, so we can move forward with the construction of it. The Zacate restoration grant is all, is actively, we're working on that, and then with the taking care grant, all those little grants is when they apply for any event that's coming up, to cover some of the expenses for all these projects. So when you see small amounts, it's just to cover expenses to continue with supplies, materials, the stuff that we need to actually move events forward. And also the one that, you know, KOB worked so hard for a couple of years, we finally got the first place this year, is as the governmental community achievement for, for the TICAC grant, which is actively for 310,000. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Mayor and city council members, I'm Vanessa Guerra with Planning and Zoning. Today, I'm going to be presenting the Planning and Zoning Department's fiscal '25, '26 budget, highlighting our organizational structure, key accomplishments, upcoming goals, and major budget considerations. This is our updated organizational chart. This is our current chart, which reflects the integration of the Building Department as a division within the Planning and Zoning Department. The structure enhances communication, streamlines operations, and ensures better coordination between planning, building, and our inspection services. Here's our breakdown of our full-time equivalent positions. These positions support our planning, building services, inspections, GIS, and administrative functions. As you can see, we have 63 positions, of which seven are currently vacant, we are in the process of seeking people for those positions.
Mayor, ma'am?
Go ahead, yes.
Ms. Guerra, you have here the MPO Policy Committee and Juan Menive, Planner 3.
Mm-hmm, they are planning employees, however, they do, they're supervised by the Policy Committee.
Okay, so, so the Metropolitan Planning Organization is not an entity on its own?
They're supported, it's an entity on its own, however, they're supported by City of Laredo employees, of which they are planning employees.
Okay. Because their, their revenue structure is a little bit different, right? Because some of that comes from-
They get a grant, but the city does, it's reimbursement, so the city is the fiscal agent for the MPO, provides all the upfront monies, pays everything, and then once the, the city invoices the state, then those monies are reimbursed.
But, so it's grant-funded?
It's grant-funded, however, thus, they don't give the city a check for those monies.
Right, right, on a reimbursement basis.
The city provides those monies first, and then it's reimbursed. Well, I think I did this one right. During the '24, '25 fiscal year, we achieved certain significant milestones, of which, of course, the most significant was the integration of the Building Services Department as a division of the Planning Department. We also created a lobby greeter position to further enhance customer service when our customers arrive in our, in our building. We translated all the Planning Division application forms into Spanish. This is intended to provide greater accessibility, and we posted those online. We launched a media campaign for landowners called "Know Before You Buy." This was intended to help our residents understand zoning and land use requirements before purchasing property. We shortened our certificate of occupancy turnaround times to one business day for residential and two business days for commercial. We increased our public engagement efforts, we held several public training events, we created a plan review and inspection checklist, we amended our land development code to allow increased density through vertical duplexes and a reduced lot depth option. We integrated the land development code and the subdivision ordinance into the MUNI code website. This is intended to help our public better easily access our codes and regulations. We established an online payment option for our Planning Division applications. We got a lot of help from our IT and management helped us with this. So this was a long time in coming, we're really happy about that. We adopted the 2021 ICC codes and updated our valuation tables. We strengthened the right-of-way ordinance to require hydro excavation to further protect underground utilities. We, we have just implemented the Amnesty Certificate of Occupancy Ordinance. This is intended to address cases where the original certificate is missing. We also set up a self-service payment kiosk in our lobby, this is again to help our customers not have to wait in line. And we also are preparing to launch select text, which will allow our customers to schedule inspections via text messages. Last, of course, but not least, we have also formalized our standard operating procedures across all divisions, from planning entitlements to, oh, I think I need to go over here, there you go. From planning entitlements to building inspections, right-of-way permitting, zoning enforcement, and customer service standards, we have developed standard operating procedures for all routine activities. Of course, as always, the standard operating procedures is intended to ensure consistency, efficiency, and compliance across all our operations. Looking ahead, we have numerous goals for next year, of which I will highlight a few. We want to procure new software for online submission and review of Platts, zone cases, and construction plans. We look forward to the, to the adoption of re-code to modernize our zoning framework. We want to finish translating the comprehensive plan into Spanish. We want to implement a formalized zoning verification process. We also want to update our downtown urban design guidelines. We want to implement recommendations, again, we're, we're looking forward to those recommendations from the self-assessment study and the Bloomberg efforts, and we want to move expeditiously in implementing any recommendations coming from those efforts. We want to conduct a downtown historic resources inventory and survey. And we definitely want to continue the quarterly public training sessions. We most importantly want to focus on overall enhancing the customer experience from the moment they enter our building. And in order to do so, we want to focus on shortening plan review times while maintaining accuracy. And we also want to explore capped inspections scheduling to ensure inspection quality. Revenues, we have listed, this slide shows our department's revenue streams, which include planning fees, permit fees, inspection fees, and other service charges. These fees, of course, directly support our operations. The projected revenues for '25 through '26 is, of course, 10,833,073 dollars. This slide, okay. This slide shows our projected 2026 expenditure budget, which is 8,177,292 dollars. These both charts show expenditures both by expense code and by division, reflecting our operational priorities and service delivery commitments. As you can see, personnel and contractual services are our most significant expenses. Moving on to major fund changes, this slide outlines changes in our funding compared to the prior year. Personnel and consulting fees show an increase due to additional personnel and planned projects, while vehicle maintenance, tenant charges, and support services are projected to decrease. These are the proposed increase in fees. These were supported by council this evening. As you can see, staff has proposed an increase in the contractual registration fees, the residential permit fees, as well as the residential plan review fees, and well as new fees for a new workflow instance, resubmit a plan review fees, and the expedited plan review fee. In closing, I just want to say that our department remains committed to providing high-quality planning and building services that support safe and sustainable growth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we only have four minutes left. Go ahead.
Could we just bring it back, just so I can have my vote on the record?
I'll move to bring back item number 32.
Let's see, can we do that? I think it's already voted on.
Yes, I just wanted my vote to be on the record.
Let's see, Mr....
Did you all, all of you voted for it? So...
It's already voted, but...
So if you voted for it, you can bring it back with a second. If you voted for it, you can bring it back with a second. But if you voted against it, you can't bring it back.
We voted for it. We voted for it.
Yes, okay, well, if we can't make it on the record, I'm just against it for the record. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Do we have another presentation? That's it?
Very good.
Four minutes. Four minutes. Any motion?
Can we bring back, I'm sorry, I asked you to contact again. Can we bring back what's lacking for next meeting?
Yes, yeah. The intent was to have all the reports, we have one left.
Yes, we only have four minutes. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? On favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.